Got it.
There we go.
All right, we welcome everybody here. So this is a the county work meeting for the commission starting today at eleven thirty. First item on the agenda is CJC update. Rodley, we're gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Do that, do that.
So just a little bit of follow up and then we'll get into why we're really here. We did, as we talked before in the other work meeting, we talked about going out to all those, all the city councils and we've talked to all the mayors and all the councils. And ask for our funding that they all received. So we've done that. We have one left. We have pleasure view and that got left off the agenda accidentally, but or we would have had it all done. It's been.
Takes time.
Takes time, yeah, cuz they're all different nights and we doubled up and she went one way and I went the other way and we've tried to get them all done, but it's been, it's been actually pretty positive. There's been some things that's come up, but most part pretty positive, you know.
That's good. That makes me happy to hear that. You know, these guys gotta understand they have a responsibility too.
Yeah.
And that makes me happy to see. I know what we got, we all got emails from Mayor Dandoi. Roy.
Yeah, Roy.
Yeah, and he had nothing but good things to say about you and his presentation and what you did.
Yeah, and that's kinda why we're here. That's where it kinda got the ball rolling and we, a- as we presented, we talked about the, the idea of having this building built and having the county help us with that construction. And then I got that email from Roy and it talked a little, went a little bit different direction and talked about, do we really want to build this facility and then turn it over to a nonprofit organization? So I met with Scott and Chris and I said, you know, at first I was totally, you know, like, let me tell you why we wanna do this, but the more I've looked at this, the more I think I've I've gone the other direction a little bit and.
You have second thoughts about who gains ownership.
Yes, and as we went through the whole thing and with the mayor, with the Roy mayor, he brought up some really good points and then I reached out to the other centers across the state. There's twenty-five of them, but some of them are satellites, so they're all, they're owned by the same county and eleven or twelve of those are owned by the county. They're not, not, the nonprofit supports it, but they're.
Right, so what about the big counties? Salt Lake, Utah, Davis.
Davis, the county owns it and they were the, they're the ones we really looked at really close is Davis. Utah County is owned by a nonprofit. Salt Lake is both. They have some that's on. Saint George is both. They have one section owned by the nonprofit and the other section is owned by the county. But most of them are the ones that really responded said, you want the county to own your building.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's, so we kinda went through all of the pros and the cons of that and there's an awful lot of awful lot of pros versus.
Yeah. Good, look at Scott Park. He generally doesn't leave a stone unturned in these kind of things.
No, and they were both great to talk to and as I sit there and listen to their reasoning, it really did, I really started thinking about this and really which direction we wanna go and and then I guess the next step was to talk to the commissioners to see where their items.
About pros and cons of this. So, so Harv, you walk in perfectly. We're now gonna start a discussion on the pros and cons of them owning the building versus the county owning the building.
Them being the CJC.
Yeah, okay, go ahead Scott.
He's already got me. Have you seen that handsome haircut he's just got on there?
Several of the cities expressed concern about giving their ARPA dollars to a not-for-profit and could then theoretically turn around and sell the building next year. So they wanted some of the stability of the county owning the building. I actually don't have any issues with that because the county owning the building, we can easily accept those ARPA dollars. We can guarantee that those ARPA dollars will be used in accordance with the statutes. And also we can lease the county-owned facility to the Friends of the CJC Board for some nominal amount with the condition that they keep the building repaired and, you know, do the maintenance repair on that. But at the end of the life of that building, it's on school district property that we're leasing for ninety-nine years for a nominal amount. So there's really no downsides to this for the county. We own the building, we can guarantee it's gonna be used for a CJC. And then we can lease it and not have to deal with any of the operating costs because we're gonna lease it to the Friends Board, have them repair and maintain it. The land comes with a restriction that it can only be used for educational facilities or CJC, so you know, it's not like we can turn around and sell it, you know.
Right.
So, and if we do, we'd have to sell it to the school district essentially.
There's a few things we need to work out on that side.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna tread in some muddy water here, but I need to do it just because behind the scenes it's gonna come up and
Yeah.
you might as well be a part of this. You know, I've sat here for about four years now and listened to you say, you know, I hate these deals.
Oh dude.
You know, where somebody owns the land underneath it, we own this and somebody else owns this. You know, so help me how this is different and are we doing the same thing today that we've been critical of in the past?
Doing the exact same thing, yeah.
So now does that shed, does that shed some light on why maybe?
Yeah, so you know, we have one of these, our ice sheet, Weaver State owns the land. You go out to the fairgrounds, where our arena is out there, half or two-thirds of it is on city property. The what over here? Egyptian. Yeah, well, not the Egyptian, but the yeah, conference center, that's on Ogden property. We hate this.
And, and we have a keesel that's on Ogden property.
Let me, let me make a couple of comments.
That one is, keesel, we own that one out.
We own the ground underneath it? Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, so I just made a couple of comments. When we set the CJC up, we set it up so it would be owned by a private nonprofit, really because the people donating money weren't trusting that the county would use it for that. They were afraid that if the county owned it, it might be turned into some of the kind of building, other, other offices and so forth. And that's why it was set up that way. I don't think that's very likely anymore. It's kind of an institution now, I can't see that ever happening. The other reason was, we thought it was easier to raise money if it was nonprofit asking for money as opposed to the county asking for money. That one probably would not be a problem either way because the, the private nonprofit that supports the CJC, it will still be there and can still go out and solicit the money and then put it into the building. So I, I don't see a problem there. I don't know about tax deductibility. If they actually gave money to the county, is that tax deductible?
So you can don't, so a third party can donate to the county and it's tax deductible, or they can donate to a not-for-profit and that's tax.
Yeah, so we could actually raise the money and give the tax deductions either way.
Yeah.
So, so there's probably that advantage. I think there's maybe a possibility that we could get the school district to actually transfer the land to King County. They would never do that for the nonprofit. But they might do it to the county and so that might solve some of those.
Yeah, that could solve.
Boy, if it's a lock, stock and barrel, I just like the idea better for future commissions.
I agree. So Rod, tell us, dollar-wise, where are you at here now?
By the way, Terrace, Mayor Allen called me, he's, he's all in.
Yeah, yeah, he was a good one.
Is, we wanted to be in as a share, all of everybody else and then
Yes.
if there was a shortage, you'd just have to keep raising funds until you met it. But all of a sudden you're switching this to our ownership and puts a little more pressure on us to give a little more money because you'd like to go in with this paid off instead of a partial debt on it, I think you tell us, we gotta raise the money. Yeah, so how much we talking, where you at?
Well, let's, let's back up a little bit on your lease too. I did have a conversation with the school district on that and I said, look, if, if the county owns this building, are you, is there a, a higher likelihood that you would just transfer?
Had that conversation with?
Well, I had it.
With who, Jeff?
No, with Zane.
Okay, oh, Woolston Hume.
Yeah, Woolston Hume, and he, he said, well.
It's not the county, it's the city.
Ogden City.
Oh, that's right.
School District.
I wasn't making the, I wasn't making the connection there, so it's, okay, Woolston Hume.
Yeah, so it's Ogden School District and, and Reed and I have talked extensively about this because there is, the state statute doesn't allow them to to just give money if they have a outstanding bond. So they have to sell the property unless it's under three acres, then they are allowed to, to donate property. But they also have, you have to go back and see how they received the property. If the property was transferred to them at some point and it's much easier to transfer it on to another government agency. So he's researching that a little bit. Zane said, I think that this property was actually donated to the school district from the Navy. If the, if they never purchased the property as, at any point, then it's much easier to transfer it to somebody else.
How long is the par, how large is the parcel?
It's, well, the whole thing was eight acres, the original Navy property, but this is two.
Oh, so it's under the three.
Yes, yeah, the part we're looking for is two, but we don't, so he said, this goes clear back to when it was a territory. He said, I'm finding deeds and stuff.
Are you serious?
Yes, he said, I'm, I'm trying to find out how we obtained the property and if it was.
I'd like to go have a Navy guy.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah. If the Navy had it, if the school district didn't purchase it, then it makes it much easier.
Peter Skeen Ogden wanted in a, a bar.
So, are those guys working with our records, reporters office?
Well, this just barely came up this week, actually, when, when we started getting this feedback from the mayors and then I met with Scott and Chris a little bit about wait, you know, cuz we were just pushing hard that.
Couldn't we get Leanne over here and say, Leanne, we want you to do something.
Well, she can't, I mean.
What's, I think we can research it ourselves. I think we can find out and I think Zane can find out.
For you right now.
We've got the best records in the state as far as.
Well, they'll be coming to Leanne to do it.
Yes, they probably will.
Yeah, that's the whole point here.
I think we should do that.
So, so I'm just saying that's a possibility that it might be easier to do that than to give it to a nonprofit.
Hey, Christie, if you can hear us, would you have Leanne Kiltz come over here to their office?
So on the other part, Commissioner, that you talked about, we're really just still going to all the cities trying to get that done and then once we get those commitments, then we'll have the one point five million from them and we'll have the one point, or the one million from you. The, the one problem, the other thing that I would have to address with our board is if they would be if they, and I have, we got a little feedback on this, so they would sell our current facility, which is a million two, we think somewhere in there, they would have to transfer that money to the county for the building. And they feel like that's a little bit of it, that's an asset that they have and if they're transferring it to Weaver County, they're losing that million-dollar asset.
Who's losing, no question.
But I don't know.
Well.
The Friends Board.
The Friends Board.
They, they own that building.
Boarded overseas and.
So they're saying.
One reluctance that the head, that the board has had has been the fact that they wanted to own the old building, the land, same issue you.
Yeah.
So Chris suggested that maybe that's a motivation for them to go along with giving it because if we can get it in the name of the county, then you've got to be simple instead of a lease and that might be.
Well, in, in exchange for that, we could make them a ninety-nine-year lease or fifty-year lease or a long-term lease so that the board felt comfortable that nothing would happen for a long period of time.
I'd be, that's where I would feel good about that.
Yeah, I would do, I'd feel really comfortable about that too.
We could structure the deed so that it addresses the school district's concerns. Say, if you ever stop using this as a CJC, you'll have like, you know, the right to come in by, or it will go back to the school district. So there's ways that we can structure that. If we structured it so they, they'd have the right to buy it for a million dollars and that million dollars goes to the Friends Board, that might satisfy them.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
And by the way, the Friends Board has only one purpose. It's, it's organization is, they cannot use the money for anything.
Well, like with the Egyptian theater, when we received that large donation from the Dumkeys, we agreed to house that, those funds within the county and then any interest that well, was obtained from that went to the Friends of the Egyptian Theater and they had a say in how that was used. So they did benefit by working with the county and having us be the custodian of those funds.
I mean, well, yeah, we have no desire other than to be the custodian. I mean, we couldn't care less.
To help facilitate.
Yeah, so we, we're all in that way and so to, to yeah, to Christmas point to go ahead and fashion this in that matter, I don't.
We, we came up with an agreement with the ETF that helped.
Okay.
So, they, they passed over the grant that was received from the Dumkeys over to be held by our county treasurer who managed.
Did he do a survey or, or anything or just her?
Just her.
Just her.
And that was about how much was this?
A million. Treasurer invested it, but there was a reach out, provision of agreement that any interest that was derived, they were able to use that, but again, down to their mission statement, they can only use it for various purposes, but it did get the board involved. And it showed that, you know, the, the county has the resources to manage large sums like that where these little boards really don't have.
Right.
So in that case, if it's the so if the Egyptian theater ever sold, they give their money back.
We'll get it.
Or you get it.
Well, that all may come together.
Yeah, it makes perfectly good sense. Yeah, we're wonderful.
Anything we do to help you, Rod, we wanna help.
True. That, I think there's just a lot of advantages of it and to it, there, there's a couple of things that we would just have to, like with these guys on Davis County.
This is, Ms. Kiltz, come right over here.
Come over here.
It's the hot seat. Burn your butt. All right, so we want you to.
You know, hold on.
Sorry, you're, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, do you know who we're not meeting with here?
No. Oh, yes, I do.
I know, and I know you too, yeah.
Yeah. That's true, and everybody else, you know. So, they're getting a piece of property from the Ogden School District and they wanna give it to us or we're talking about them giving it to us so we can use it. Anyway, without a whole lot of explanation here, we would like you to research how Ogden got this property and. We're pretty sure it came from the Navy.
To this piece right here.
I'm going, I'm going with card game. I'm going with A, you gotta go figure it out. Right there, right there.
This, oh, right here.
Does it show broke apart, in parcel?
Yeah, and I can probably get you.
Yeah, she could take it down right now.
So, so the parcel is gonna show that all the way, probably from Jackson all the way to that whole piece. But we're only getting the last, the two acres. And I've got that survey, the survey's all done.
The survey, I was gonna say, I think, yeah, I worked with.
Yeah, yeah, so the survey's done, it's two acres.
It really comes to about right here, we're asking.
We can give you a piece of paper, man.
We're coming to about right there and this, this is kinda unusable here, but we wanna know how they got it because we think at some point it was the Navy owned it and then they donated it to Ogden School District at some point or to the state. I think it probably went to the state because it used to be the state, the state owned it for the deaf and the blind school. So it went to the state, I think, and then from the state it went to the Ogden School District. But I don't think anybody ever purchased it. I think it was transferred. And if it wasn't ever purchased, that makes it much easier for the Ogden School District now owns it to transfer it to Weaver County.
I can find that, but if they didn't record any purchases, cuz usually people don't disclose that anytime.
Even from government to government?
We'll look at it and see.
That might be helpful too, cuz if there's no purchase, then there's no purchase.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you, nobody is more qualified than Leanne to do what we're asking.
I know people borrow money and they're government entities and I don't usually see.
State, you can count on the fact the county can pay.
No, 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 that one's no better than that part. Sorry. Yeah, we'll go look that up.
Okay, so just take time and just get back to it when you can.
Are you gonna meet again?
Uh, when you come to us with that information, we will.
And we're working on other stuff at the same time.
Yeah, there is other stuff, but if, we can get that in the next year too, that'd really be helpful. Thanks, Leanne, appreciate you very much.
Yes, I can do.
We know if you want some loss, you can get it done.
I can do it. All right.
Thank you.
On the money side, there's still some money to raise, no question.
Yeah.
But if you take the two and a half million from ARPA money and the million dollars, million two from the facility, the church is committed to put in somewhere around three hundred thousand.
Oh, that's great.
And so we're.
So that, you're pretty close to four million.
Yeah, we'd be close.
So is this gonna cost more than four?
Five and a half.
Good heck, what are you building? It's gonna be five and a half? But I just can't imagine, it's five million.
Well, this is. This is from, frankly, from Wadman. So that's what, that's.
I know, but how many square feet is that?
That one, so the whole thing is about eighteen thousand square feet. But that's three floors. There's three floors and the bottom floor, the basement will not be finished, so that's almost, that's almost six thousand on the basement that won't be finished.
Has it really got been this big, Rod?
Um, all the space on that whole floor and the upstairs is already taken, already committed.
Is it?
Mm-hmm. Every office is committed, every space is committed. The, this is all staff up here. I mean, yeah. Well, and, and we've got growth. We do have the basement, we're not.
Yeah, I understand.
We don't.
What happens is we're seeing about two hundred thirty, forty, fifty dollar a foot construction prices right now.
Yeah, it's outrageous.
It is outrageous, you know, you used to, well, commercials more, I understand that.
Yeah, commercials.
But you used to have to get the you know, commercial two fifty a foot. This is more than that.
And I was, when I first started this whole thing two years ago, I was thought we were looking at me, I thought we could do this for three million. It's just, and that's, and I think by the time we get it done, we're gonna be more, so I'm hoping the contractor will help us with that a little bit, so.
Yeah.
That's just.
Jay Wadman again coming to the rescue.
I don't know what else, the, I don't know. We just don't wanna underbill.
So you're gonna bid this out?
The county would, would bid it out cuz of the ARPA funding, so they'll have to bid it out. Yes, yeah, we, that's the other reason we wanted the Friends Board kinda out of it. We're just not, there's no way we can handle a project like this. There's just, it's over our heads.
Well, that's what we'll do. We do that kinda stuff. The guys that would do it are sitting right there in front of you.
So are you guys good with the county would own this?
Circumstances that we've discussed today, I am, and I am too.
So.
And I think Gage would be also.
So the circumstance you're talking about is the, the land.
Right.
If you're coming, if you're coming just and saying, hey, will the county, will the county accept that all this stuff and and there's, there's a, there's a possibility that the land could come with it. You know, that would be the best thing for us.
And we, we would love that too. We would really like to own the property.
I think Woolston Hume and them, that's what the whole idea is. And we, we're talking about either fifty-year leases or ninety-nine-year leases here too.
You know, that, that hasn't been a great thing for the Ogden School District, Ogden City and for them to own the other parcel. You know, their portion of the parcel. Because now Ogden happens right now to be wanting to expand that BDO out there and they can't do it because our building's on their land. So they're not happy with it either.
Now, I think Ogden would love to do this. I really think Ogden School District would love this, this to give us the land. It's just the state statute that they're concerned with, that, that, that doesn't allow that, but I think it really.
We'll work our way around.
These guys can look at it, but it seems to me that it does fit us.
So the answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
We will work with you on this.
Perfect.
We've, yeah, driven by this as well as you.
I think, I think it's a great project.
Yeah.
It's gonna be really nice.
It's a great project.
Yep.
And I'll be honest with you, you can't go back on this project. We just gotta get things lined up quick.
I mean, I've been pretty surprised about the various cities' results.
I'm happy about that. They, pretty much everyone has been very positive.
A lot of them had initial questions about, well, this is a county deal, why should we do it? It really is not a county deal.
That's right, and they don't understand that.
Well, that's the, cuz Matt, South Ogden called me and they said, and I said, okay, listen, why don't you just keep your money, forget about this and by the way, fix your own stupid water problem out there where the water goes under the drain track. Well, no, you don't have to get like that. And I said, well, you started. I'm just gonna tell you how this is gonna go.
We think there's some internal issues in South. Well, she's not Jane Helstrom, we don't, yeah, yeah. She's the cousin of, of this.
Joan Helstrom?
Joan Helstrom is the cousin of Matt Dixon.
Aunt.
Yeah, the aunt of Matt Dixon. Joan took the family trade, pie business and excluded the Dixons. And so I think there's some feelings there against her. She was tied in to the CJCs at one time, isn't anymore, but she was. She worked for the, the Salt Lake, the AGs of the CJC Department. So I think it's Matt taking out his, his frustration with his aunt.
Really?
Yes.
Well, we have.
Yeah, that's a yes.
That's Harold and Fredona's boy.
What can I say, what can I say?
He was a detective from Lloyd PD and he worked with us at the CJC.
He's on their, he's on their council.
So we've been in communication with him, trying to smooth out edges, but that's the, I would say the hardest city.
That's the only one we've had trouble with.
Mayor Dandoi sent us, all three of us, a little note on, did you see that?
Yeah, that's, that's how this kinda all started. We, we, he's been just wonderful to work with.
Boy, I'll say.
And he just brought up some.
He's a great guy. Good guy. Yes or no, it doesn't matter, he's a good guy.
So my next question here is. I just wanna be, make sure, cuz we, we're on Wake Cog's agenda. So what can I, what can I say?
Tonight, you're on.
No, it's next week.
No, it's next week.
It's next week.
Oh, yeah, so twenty.
Well, the mayor.
Which one?
Uh, Roy.
Okay.
He, he, he said, we, can you bring it back to Wake Cog and tell Wake Cog that the county is willing to do, willing or not? He said, cuz, he said, I've had lots of conversations with other mayors and they all have the same concern. We would love to see the county own it, not a nonprofit.
What a great.
So what do I dare say at the Wake Cog meeting, I guess?
We followed up with them and there's, and that's moving in that direction. We think we can with the, you know, people, we've got Ogden City School District looking into it. You've got the county surveyor and recorder looking into it now.
Well, we made a commitment to you at a level that we thought we could come in at.
Right.
And, uh, you know, I'm not saying it'll be exactly that level, but it's gonna be close to that. We've all committed to that. And so.
Let, let's strategize one more thing and that is how we deal with Ogden City.
That.
The district or the city?
They have the biggest, the largest amount. Theirs is almost six hundred and thirty dollars.
So, so we met with, well, the mayor didn't be with us, we met with and, and he was very non-committal.
Right.
As he always is. And we pushed him pretty hard. He was positive but non-committal, I guess that was the best way to say it. So any, any appropriate pressure there would help.
Okay, so let me tell you, we've got, I think it's Thursday this week, isn't it? Commissioner? Commissioner?
Well, lunch is tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow.
I'm just right now putting it in my notes.
Okay, put them in your notes. We'll talk to them tomorrow.
Thank you. That's, cause that's a big one.
Yeah, no, no, we understand.
And, and by the way, Ogden by far has the most use of that center.
And they understand it. They know. And they have a lot of ARPA funds too. They have as much as we do almost. But they, uh, you know, they're, anyway, you're right.
Yeah, and right here on the second floor, Ogden City Office.
Yeah.
That's their detective, this has a full-time office at the center. And not to do Ogden City cases, not to do CJC stuff. I mean, so it's.
Yeah, we understand.
They.
Oh, they got a huge one coming down the, uh, canyon. You know, they got a ten million dollar water line. Well, about a thirty million dollar water line.
Thirty or forty.
Yeah, and they want us to finance twenty five percent of it. And, uh, you know. We're having trouble there, cause you know, that's user fees. Water is user fees.
There's one question. My question is like, we've been to a lot of cities already, obviously we're missing one. The only question. All the questions are, well, what if one city doesn't donate?
Well, that's Leonard Call.
Well, that's, I don't know what, how that works. Like if we don't raise exactly one point five like we expected, like what's the procedure? I think that's a question you're gonna get at Wake.
Okay, well, the question is, is we've committed to the amount that we will, I mean, also, so that's just gonna be a shortage. The nonprofit's gonna have to. Make.
It may mean, it may mean delaying the whole project for a year or two. No, I think that's what we tell them.
Yeah, oh yeah, very well might be.
I just think that's a question you're gonna get at Wake Cog. So I just.
And well, you know, it'll be a brisk, uh, discussion around the table. We have these away talk. But it's appropriate to have it there. That's a great place to have it. Uh, you'll be sitting right there, Rod.
Okay, well, and it's not gonna, it's gonna be one or two cities that doesn't. I don't know if I would wanna be that one or two.
Understand, just like you said, this isn't a county issue. And, uh, uh, basically this is one of those that we all, if we all put in, we lighten the load for everybody else. But if we don't put in, then the load really becomes heavy to bear.
Yeah, yeah, if everybody.
So it's just that simple.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no magic here.
We, we absolutely love Washington Terrace, cause we got there and I said, this is how much it is. And they're like, well, we already spent our ARPA funding and then. They're like, yeah, but we got all those surplus cars. So let's just sell all of our surplus cars and give them money. And it was almost right to the dollar. So that's, we love that kinda response from.
All right. Well, thanks, folks.
Speaking of Wake Cog, uh, we had a meeting that Chris talked to him about that the other day. With, with the cities, some of the cities that are contract cities with sheriff. They'd like to have you set up a subcommittee of Wake Cog. I don't know whether the commission does that or Wake Cog itself does. Some committee of Wake Cog, then would be just the contract city. So they can talk about. Uh, funding issues and recommendations to sheriff. So I told my.
Oh, the, with the sheriff.
We, I would be, it would be the, the contract cities with the sheriff in a subcommittee. They could meet regularly and talk about relations with the sheriff.
And you know, honestly, we've got our way, out of our way to stay out of that. You know, we felt like the, well, and when it was Terry Thompson, he wanted us out. That was something that he did. Now, the sheriff hasn't come to us and asked us to be involved. He invites us, but he doesn't.
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to be involved, just set the committee. Just have Wake Cog set a subcommittee up. So we gotta. Be on there because the unincorporated area is.
But the sheriff does that now.
Yeah.
So he calls that.
He does. They, they just like to have a.
Would they like to have a formal, and you've heard that from.
That meaning, cause I know the sheriff attended on Friday, but have we heard if he's okay with having that, uh, creating that subcommittee?
If who's okay?
Uh, the sheriff. I think Perry was.
Well, Perry was there, right? It was his idea, so I would think. Well, we'll, we'll talk to sheriff about it. When Gage gets here, we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll work through it. That's encouraging.
See, that was a piece of cake. Wasn't it? That was a piece of cake. Reed, grab you some on the way out here. Oh. All right, thank you. Good luck. All right, here we go, Stephanie.
You guys go eat. I, I.
We will.
I need, I only need seven minutes. This is an easy one.
But while we're, uh, dressing our plate, you can feel free to start talking. This, uh.
It's their compatible use plan. And, um, I'm trying to get a copy of it for you guys. I just got this email.
Compatible use?
Yeah, and it's.
What does that mean?
So.
Yeah, why does that start as a cup? If it's compatible use of what?
Um, they wanna look at their growth and development as opposed, in conjunction with our growth and development in, in the surrounding areas. So it's not just. Weaver County, it's all the cities in the area. It's Davis County. So they.
When you say they want, look.
Hill Air Force Base, um, they had a study commission. We allegedly had participation in it. I'm trying to get a list of the people that participated. Uh, from the, the, um, the firm that was hired to do this. So. Government contracted to have this compatible use plan put together. It's about this thick, and I'm also trying to get copies of it for you. But I just wanna bring it to your attention, cause they're asking us to, uh, sign a resolution. Uh, supporting this plan and the implementation of this plan. So once I can get a copy of the plan and the stakeholders that participated. Um, I'll bring that in and have you guys go over that. And we'll look at the projects that they're recommending and they're, they're these joint projects. For economic and community development. And there's actually some funding, uh, from the, from the government to help do some implementation. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention that it exists and it was completed in December. Um.
So when you say these projects, we don't know what these projects.
Not yet. They're, they're recommended, they're recommendations that this company has put together. Uh, and it's gonna be like land.
And this company, are, are they a subcontractor of Hill Air Force Base?
Correct. Yeah, so they were charged to come in and do the study and do the stakeholder meetings and put everything together. And then do recommendations for community economic development relative to Hill Air, Hill Air Force Base. And the surrounding areas. So I haven't seen what, I haven't seen the plan yet. No, not at all.
That's just fine.
Yeah, I, and I, and I let him know that.
So you don't see anything negative due as of here?
And it's recommendations, it's not mandates. They can't come in and say you have to do new projects. But there's opportunities, you partnerships. And yet, and, and if it's something that's gonna be valuable for us, particularly since we've got our general plan coming out, that's something that kind of meshes with that. Um, you might consider doing something.
Welcome to eat.
Thank you.
We buy this for you because you're the twelve o'clock.
We appreciate it.
And, um, anyway, I just wanna give you a heads up about it, that they do want us to look at, at the plan. And then sign a resolution saying that we support what they're doing. Doesn't mean we have to commit any funds, doesn't mean we have to commit to doing any of the projects.
Just means we've seen their plan.
Seen their plan and we like it. And if there are projects in there that we do really like, there's some opportunity to partner with them and get some funding for. Yeah, that's it.
That's great, actually.
I think it's fantastic.
So why are they doing this? Is it because they feel like their impact is greater now?
Yeah, uh, they want to create quality of life for their employees and for, and, and they wanna create quality growth. This is an, I'll just hold her face. We were doing this in Georgia, actually. This is a program that we were, uh, participating in in Georgia as well. It's a really. It's actually a really good kind of a, kind of a that place-based, bottom-up approach where you come into the community. They wanna, they want to do compatible projects with the community so that there's a partnership there. It's actually very positive. Surprisingly, since it's from.
That is good. I have no issues there. So you know, it's interesting, my, uh, nephew just went to work. At Northrop Fleming.
I'd love my son to work there.
Pardon?
I'd love for my son to work there.
So he's a mechanical engineer and he, uh, he's worked at three other places. And when, uh, Northrop founding. You know, it's one of those deals where they really wanted him, so they made him a nice offer.
Yeah.
Well, he'd just moved to another company three months before. Or three weeks, not months, three weeks before. So. Uh, when, uh, when he quit, he walked in and told him, he said, hey, I'm really sorry. He says, I feel terrible about this, but he says, I can't pass this up.
Right.
And they said, well, Arielle's gonna give us a chance to meet it. And they said, he said, well, okay. Cause they said, we like you too. We'd like to keep you. So he sat down, went over the package, and they said, whoa, we can't touch that. We understand.
I was looking at my son at internship out there this summer. And it's basically a full-time salary.
Yeah, the intern.
Just to enter on that.
Okay.
They're, they're bringing them in at incredible rate.
Hundred and five buck, hundred and five a year.
Yep.
So anyway, he came on, started working. When, uh, the second pay period, he noticed his check was too high. So he went back in and told me, he said, I think you paid me too high. And I said, oh, no, actually, we didn't. We just gave you a raise already. And he said, what do you mean, give him his raise? He says, well, we raised everybody because they're starting to steal our engineer stuff. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think a hundred and five is more like a hundred and ten now. Oh, it's just amazing what's happening.
How old a kid is he?
Oh, he's probably twenty nine. Twenty eight.
So my son gets his, will have his degree to finish at twenty four. And he also has special, um, intelligence training. So he has that level one clearance. And that, they almost, almost every position out there at Northrop requires.
Level one clear?
So trying to get him to apply up then. They have so many positions open, it's just insane.
My oldest son. Is it Hillfield? And, uh. He, uh. He left, uh, I'm trying to think of the guy's set point to go out there. So he went out there or, uh, to Hillfield. And he's done really well. He's been there three years now. And he's got seven or eight raises. Yeah, and, uh, the other day, they made him a lead over a team. Well, you know, that's pretty substantial. A lot of guys go ten or fifteen years, don't get that opportunity. He's their three. And, uh, they just, things are cooking at Hillfield.
Yeah.
I, I was telling him about this other deal. And I said, man, Eric, maybe we ought to look into this. He says, Dad, let me tell you, they're treating me off the good right now. Because he says, they know they have to compete. And so he said, I, I have no complaint. Well, Steph, that's really good news.
Yeah, I think so.
Questions, Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I'll give you guys that report. We'll rip, pick out the Weaver County staff to look at.
Okay. So wow, we've got about fifteen minutes here. You come in and dropped a little bit of a bomb before we started. Damn you.
Well, it wasn't my fault.
It was, you dropped it early. It was your fault. I tell my wife, you never give somebody bad news before. It's always after lunch. Your stomach's full, you're happy.
Well, it does have a silver wedding. We did get five million.
So who's told you this and how'd you come up with that?
Uh, Hunter.
What's the bomb you dropped? I missed it.
Uh, we only got five of the twenty.
Really?
And I'm waiting to hear what Cal's campus does.
Why only five of the twenty?
Oh, it all played out. Melissa didn't get anything.
Melissa? The three million?
She got three million, but she, her other appropriation.
The seven fifty?
She didn't get the seven fifty.
Really?
Yeah.
Five of the twenty?
Five of the twenty. And I'm, I'm not gonna be happy if, if Ogden got more than us. Count about that for a day.
Was Gage know this?
Yeah.
So what did he say to you? Cause Gage, he was on the inside on all this.
Yeah, I said, any of these on the appropriations? He finned us, yes, we got five million. Talking to Jerry today to figure out next steps. And then, uh, Chris says, are we locked? No way to go to ten? And Gage says, I'll talk to Jerry, but probably not, not a good chance. Cause they put the report out already. Gary published it. Yeah. So we, we need to go back to the drawing board.
They're washing this money down there, and this is what we get.
Well, the other thing we need to know is, is Project Madman coming. Cause that, that changes our timeline. If they're not coming. We have some time to, to really.
Yeah, but without them, or without that money, we can't. I mean, the housing aspect, this is what finally brought this all into focus, you know, between the housing and that. Uh, with the money, we, you know, central, uh, Central Weaver was willing to stand forward and make a little bit of a commitment to us here. Well, now they're not.
Well, no, that's honestly true. I, I can get the house, we can get the housing online, um, with Little Mountain as it is right now. So.
Yeah, but it's on enough money. It's only six million dollars.
We can get the housing going. Cause they can tie in a little mountain as Little Mountain stands right now. Uh, but no, we do have to decide what else we're gonna do with the industrial and the, and the.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, LMSA can take over the. Yeah, they can take them. That's true.
But if Project Madman comes, we have to really make a decision.
What happened down there? What's going on down there?
I don't know.
Twenty five percent.
Yeah.
And they have them. They just got inundated. And my understanding is everything got pushed right onto Jerry. And I think he's just trying to be equitable. Cause there are so many requests.
Do we know anything about, uh, the log?
Not yet. I asked Steve, I'm like, I need you to find that out for me. Cause if they got more than us, I'm. Well.
Well, I'm sure they did.
Ironically, uh. Brandon's coming today to pitch that to you guys, that hundred percent tip.
Which one is that for?
A hundred percent tip for Tattles Campus?
No, no, no. For, um, flagship.
Except for Solomon? Or the. American can or whatever it is.
Black flagship?
I don't know.
This was, I guess, put in the works a couple of years ago.
Is this the one you already committed to?
That's what he is saying.
This is the one Scott Park was talking about a couple of weeks ago.
Which one's this?
I think it's not, you weren't here yet. I think it's for Solomon.
Yeah, they're saying four years ago. Five years ago?
I think it's twenty sixteen.
Just before you got here, probably. We did that with the state. Was an overlay.
Well, he's coming today to update and ask.
I thought that deal was way done.
No. None of it, this area hasn't been created. I mean, they've, and they're on their end, but not on our end.
So Tom is retiring.
Yeah.
You have, did you get an invitation?
No.
You did not? Are you serious?
To what? To his retirement party?
Well, I'll send you mine.
I'm okay.
I'm a little surprised. We've had in the paper, three or four days, they've added. In the world knows.
You know where they should hold that? At the fairgrounds.
There's enough.
That was a joke.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying.
Cause that's what he told me when I met him.
I don't even know what to say. I don't even know what to say. You depressed me.
Well, we'll figure it out. I am uh, in the process of drafting an RFP to do a, a master plan out there. Uh, for the whole industrial piece.
Okay.
And um, I'm going to hit up Wausau Regional Council and see if they have any money.
WF, Wausau's front.
Yeah, they got money.
Do a master plan?
Uh-huh.
I figured they would, I'm gonna talk to them.
And they uh, it's set in a separate, they'll tell you where to apply.
Okay. I was gonna talk to Bruber.
Well.
Specifically.
In fact.
Ben Wolfrich, Ben Wolfrich.
Isn't uh, isn't uh, Melissa on that?
That's only for CDBG.
You know, you can also talk to uh. Brooke. Brooke's very helpful.
Okay, I will.
Our Brooke.
Yeah, I, yeah, I knew who you were talking about. Yes, she would be perfect, actually. I wouldn't mind stealing Brooke sometimes, Sean, from you.
Don't even talk about that.
Okay, well.
I don't even talk about that, that's right.
She and I had a really good conversation at the plant.
Brooke is amazing.
At the, I know, and I was like, um, hmm, wondering how I could integrate you into my department a little bit.
Well, I'll tell you about Brooke, you know, she's very deep, she's one of those people that gets into detail.
I need one of those people.
I'm saying, you're about the third person that said that.
That said that to you? I'm like, hmm. I might borrow her sometime.
Certification.
I won't.
Scott.
Oh.
When WFRC or somebody approaches you in town, they'll always just absolutely.
Says she? Oh, you know, her level of pressure here is way down. I mean, there's times when she's very, very busy for periods of time, and then she goes down, way down. So. Plus, I think she enjoyed that project with what else.
I think so. She feels very accomplished.
She's working on all the, everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I tell you, this is a dang good lunch. Is this from uh, Olive Garden? The Italian Denny's.
I love that.
Yeah, it was really good. It was good to name food.
Italian Denny's. Really? Wow.
And then it took a huge.
Yeah.
Customer service.
I'm gonna say, you don't have a, you didn't have a business.
It did?
We were there a couple of times and had horrible. We were there two hours when they were doing that. A Denny's has changed. We tried a different one, same thing, and then. Why is there gonna post a review? Cause I was so pissed. I looked at that, yeah, it's like, they couldn't, it was like dropped. Like fifty percent in the customer service. Did it change?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
When my kids were all. Before we had much money, you know, I was really poor back then. We just started our business and. Our kids were getting old enough that I wanted to teach them manners on how to eat out, what you do. So we used to go on uh. Saturday morning, we'd go to Denny's. I'd love that because I could get those grand slams. Buck ninety-nine.
Are you out of your mind?
Yeah. And uh, so I'd take the whole family in there. We did that right until my oldest boy got to the point where, Dad, I wanna order off the menu. We're done. No more Denny's. Anyway. Yeah, we used to go in there all the time to eat breakfast.
You said, menu, what's a menu?
I ate all the expensive ones. There's just greens left. So Cortland's gonna be calling in. I apologize, but he is uh, out sick today.
Oh, no. I feel bad about that.
But. And I don't really have all of the background information to. Present this next item, but he's gonna help out.
So is everybody here that needs to be here? Minus Portland, and he's gonna call in?
Scott Mendoza's coming up. Um.
Okay.
This is the one, this is gonna be talking about. What uh, Bill Morris and Mayor Van Lewen came in a couple of months ago to discuss. Uh, these little slivers of right away to transfer over. And then also, there are some parcels located along the river. But we thought with the river ones, we would go into closed session. So that you can talk about what price, uh, or what value you want the county to receive in return.
Okay.
So.
Be appropriate.
Going to see if I can work this.
Well, that's like a sausage soup, isn't it?
Kinda got some stuff in there. It's pretty good, I thought.
Yeah, a little bit of a bite. You can tell there's some sausage in there.
Not, it's good, but not as good as that clam chowder.
Uh-uh. Not here, though.
No. We'll have to take it for some clam chowder, some of the best clam chowder.
What was that?
Hughest in North Ogden.
Oh, really?
But I, my understanding is you can't order the clam chowder for catering.
For what?
For catering.
Okay.
I don't think so. That'd be great if you could. Pretty amazing.
So today's the first day for filing.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Are we? Yeah, we are, actually.
I'm just gonna, okay, now I'll keep my comments.
Go ahead, you make your comments. Ready to go out of court session into an open session. I need a motion.
I move, we go back into uh, open meeting.
And I second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in an open meeting again. Next people up. Is discussion regarding the twenty twenty budget rollovers and financial penalties. Scott Park and Ricky Hatch are here. Good to have you here. Ricky, if you want any more of that, feel free.
I just have to have a red stick.
Well, there's a little zonja there. There's some soup, that's amazing. What good. Well, go ahead.
All right. Oh, here we go. Mr. Hatch, I wanna see that. You can share that too, man. Um, I'm gonna start off with the boring thing first, so we're not gonna talk about the, the money yet. I'm gonna talk about the financial policy first, and then we'll.
Talk about what?
The financial policy.
Oh, okay.
Do the boring stuff first, it's quick.
Okay.
They're super entertaining and they're really good.
They are super entertaining and they are really good.
You know, I came today just for that. That's the height, I mean, it's.
Right. So every year. Every year, we have the state auditor who does, has us do a financial review of the county and the county itself, and we usually score really well. On that, but not always, because we, we actually keep getting dinged each year. Through their fraud risk assessment. Every year, we get dinged because we don't have a financial policy that covers reporting fraud, waste, and abuse. And we don't have a financial policy that covers cash receipting. Now, we have. Department procedures for cash receipting, and we have expectations of fraud, waste, and abuse, but they're not actual policies, and so. The auditor, who's usually a first-year auditor, comes out and says, well, where's your policy? And then, well, we don't have a policy, and we go through this whole explanation, and sometimes they check us off saying we do, and sometimes they say we don't. And you can never have any consistency from your dear, cause it's always the brand-new auditor who's asking the question, so I thought, let's just. Fix this. Let's just put in a policy for cash receipts. Let's put in a policy for um, reporting fraud, waste, and abuse.
So that a policy is really no more than just a written statement that we adopt?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yes, we're checking the boxes. And so while we were doing that, we were pulling up some of our old policies, and I just wanna show you. Some of these policies. So this one's from nineteen ninety-three.
More, I remember Mark Moore.
Yeah, and you, you look at this format, and I think this was written on the typewriter. I'm not sure. There were computers back in nineteen ninety-three, weren't there?
Yeah.
I don't think Mark had one.
Yeah.
It sure looks like a typewriter.
Yeah. And then I looked at some of our other policies. So here's, we've got some handwritten stuff at the top. It's not machine readable. You can't find anything, and you can't hit Ctrl-F and find, cause it's just a scanned image.
Dave Ziver.
It was empty. That was drawn. Yeah, so that's kinda, that's. And then here's that one example with just this crazy four dot, four dot, one dot, one dot, two dot, one dot X. I mean, so these. So. The fraud hotline policy, I'll show you what we added here. We added this section that says county employee has firsthand knowledge of improper governmental activities. Shall report those to either the direct supervisor, HR, clerk auditor, attorney or the fraud hotline. So there's a responsibility now for any employee who is aware of firsthand knowledge that they need to report it. Any questions on those?
No.
Okay. There was one other policy I wanted to talk to you about. So we have the comp policy and this is basically. If you work overtime, we pay you overtime unless you tell us that instead of getting money, you would rather have hours.
Comp time.
Comp time. And so in that case, we say, okay, that's fine. We're happy to pay you in hours. Because what that does is it helps us manage our budget. We don't pay you more than two thousand eighty hours a year because you still get the same amount. Some of it's. More time off, but no more than two thousand eighty hours. Then cash goes out the door. Does that make sense? So it helps us manage our budget.
Decrease work product.
There's decreased work productivity, but there's no more cash.
It does, but what in my mind, what happened is you just said, okay, now we're going to limit this to two hundred or two thousand eighty hours. Huh?
Twenty eighty.
Yeah. Well, what if he wants to take part and pay and? Part and call.
You can, so employees have great flexibility with this. So they can, each department can say, look, we're going to let you have up to thirty hours of comp and then anything over that we pay you out or. Or we said you could take up to two hundred and forty hours in comp and anything over that we pay you out. Okay. So it's very, the problem comes in is when an employee says, okay, I want to accrue the comp. I'm going to use it as vacation for time off. And then they come back and say, I changed my mind. I want to be paid for it. And so I've never worked for an entity that allows that to happen unless they're terminating to pay them out for their comp time. And what that that did to us this year is we went over budget, tens of thousands of dollars in different departments because they all decided to get paid out right at the end of the year. And we had no chance to change the budget. So the cash.
That's because if they did, they weren't, they were going to lose it.
No, they don't lose comp time. So they just wanted a Christmas bonus. They wanted, they wanted us to be their bank.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but was it that? How much? Was it that big of a deal?
Tens of thousands.
You go over a budget, you have to report yourself to the state auditor's office that you're over budget. There's a finding that they issue. It's a, it's a big deal to go over a legally adopted budget.
Is it? Well, why don't we? Why don't we just set fifty thousand dollars aside to cover that next year?
Well, we could, but what I'm arguing is the policy doesn't allow for them to be paid out for their comp time at will. They can either choose to get comp time or they can choose to get paid out.
Doesn't bother me that we do that. Does it bother you?
It bothers me that we have a weakness in our controls that allows us to expend more than our budget. So what I would like to say, I've talked to.
Control freak, right?
Well, we do have to have controls in place to ensure the safeguard of the county funds.
No, I understand that. This doesn't bother me that this is a. Something that we allow our employees to do.
It it makes it harder for departments to manage their overtime because they don't know. Because when you're working overtime, that doesn't show up in any report if you choose it as comp time and then all of a sudden you get.
Most of overtime. Is event man is impacted. So basically, you don't even know you're going to pay it at the beginning of the year and it's based on a big storm storm or a couple of the rodeos or events that we booked or something like that. But it's not really controllable anyway.
The biggest, not offender, the biggest increase of overtime is the percentage is the transfer station. Sheriff's office, we have a budget set aside for that Golden Spike. They really don't have.
Why would they be accrual?
We have some employees that get overtime every pay period there.
Then I'm okay with, I don't care that they pay them a little overtime. If somebody takes time off, someone, none of that bothers me. But of all the venues that struggle keeping track of it, they shouldn't struggle.
So what they're doing is they're letting their people accrue a lot of comp time and then they just choose to get paid out for it random intervals and that's what pushed us over budget. So what I'm trying to do, I talked, so I talked to Sean about it. I talked to HR about it. Our policy doesn't really allow that. So what we wanted to do was go back and just remind department heads in a department head meeting and say, look, if your employees want to accrue comp time, they can accrue comp time up to whatever limit you set for your department. If they want to get paid out for comp or paid out for overtime, they can get paid out for overtime. But what they can't do is say they're going to accrue it as comp time and then choose to get paid out for it. Because we make decisions as to who gets the overtime based off of whether they chose to take comp time or whether they chose to take dollars helps us manage our budget. That's in the policy. But now when they jump back and forth like that, it makes it hard for us to control the budgets.
And that's just basically because you've got cash.
Yeah.
It was not budget.
Yeah, I mean, you actually spend more money this way if you let them get paid out. They choose comp time, it actually saves the county money because.
Because they don't get overtime.
They don't get overtime. They get time off. They would rather have time off than extra pay. So what I'm asking for is permission to enforce the policy as written.
So let me ask you this. If we said to them, okay, the day you earn it, you have to book it. So you either got to book it as comp time or you got to take overtime pay and be done with it. And they'll say, well, okay, what does that mean? Well, that means if if it's comp time and you elect to make it. Pay it out and not take this comp time, you have to take it, but not as overtime. Because you didn't book it as overtime.
I don't get what that means. So what?
So you don't get time and a half.
Yeah.
So you have to give them time and a half. You have to give them time and a half.
It's true. The state law wouldn't allow you to do that.
But they earn comp time, time and a half.
Yeah.
Uh huh. So you're saying.
Also, it really doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you did this all the time in the background.
No, hold on. You say they earn comp time at time and a half. So if they book, if they work three hours over. They would have four and a half hours of pay. And if they book it as comp time, they book us four and a half hours?
Yes.
Not three.
At four, yeah. Four and a half hours. So if they switch that, you're right. They should be paid just straight time for that.
Well, yeah.
But we have to, yeah, we have to pay them time. So comp time's paid at your regular rate, but they earn it at one and a half times.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you get another four and a half hours of vacation and that is.
Yeah.
If you have time to take.
Sure. But what I'm saying is if you choose it as vacation, then you get it as vacation. If you choose it as cash, you get it as cash. You can't change your mind. Sure. And you can, you can change your election, but what you can't do is tell me you're going to do one thing and then two months later come out and do something else. Because I can't manage that. I don't, it never shows up on.
It drives you absolutely crazy.
Well, it doesn't show up on overtime reports and it makes us go over our legally adopted budget.
You know, it absolutely drives you crazy.
Going over legally adopted budget drives me crazy.
That's why you're in here lobbying us.
That's why I'm here lobbying you to.
This is a sanity. This is an exercise in sanity.
And managing our budgets.
Okay.
So all I'm asking is, I'd like to tell the departments, they need to follow the policy as written. You don't get, if you tell us you want to ask comp time, you take it as comp time. If you tell us you wanted his cash, you get him cash. And you can't change, you can change your mind anytime going forward, but you can't change your mind with what you've already done. So if you.
So at the end of the year, you can't have a Christmas bonus in that comp. However, if you wanted to take your comp, hold on, if you wanted to take your comp time between Christmas and New Year's and spend all that time with your family, that's perfect.
Yes, that's great time.
Well, none of that, the way he described that to me. If you told him, if the employee told you that I'm going to book that and then I'm going to take it at the end of the year, just so you know, I am going to take it. Well, at least then you could go ahead and book it and you knew how to account for it. See, so it's the fact that he doesn't know causes him to go nuts.
Yeah.
If he knew, it wouldn't bother him at all.
Yeah, but how do you predict that? I mean, you can't predict when the employee's going to decide they want extra cash.
Is it put in the same pot as vacation time?
No, it's not. So.
They're not going to get paid out.
No, they do get paid out if they quit. If they quit, they are, they're entitled to that comp time.
Yeah, what happens? They take it out of this pot and put it back in this pot. And that's what drives Scott nuts because he has certain amount of monies in there. And when they move that back over, it overruns his money.
Yeah.
As I said, this is an exercise in keeping Scott sane. That's all it is.
So.
Well, not really. If we, if we get reported to the state because of it.
Yeah.
Then under that scenario, I'd be pushing back a little bit.
Self-reporting.
I think the fact that you can change it going forward should allow the employees enough flexibility.
There's so much flexibility with it as the policy is currently written.
Hold on now. So hard you say it's self-reporting.
It's self-reporting.
Would you say that as if he's got the ability to not report it?
It's self-reporting.
I know, but if you don't report it and they find it on the next audit, then now it's going to be more than just a singer. They might even give you a penalty.
So not reporting it is not an option. So not only, so you have to personally sign that you're not aware of anything.
Okay.
I mean, you don't, you don't go down that road. You don't even go down that road. There's, there's personal liability for signing that, not just professional liability.
Under that scenario, we wouldn't want you to.
No, we're going to take it back. You get what I'm saying.
So you're just poking him, aren't you?
He's just poking me. That's fine.
And I'd rather having a good time with you. So if you just let me continue, that would be really good. But otherwise you can be however you want.
Scott, what do you want to do about it?
I want you to let me talk to in a department head meeting protect potentially tomorrow morning and just remind. Department heads that employees don't get paid out for comp time. Unless they tell us they're going, I mean, they either get paid for overtime or they accrue comp time. They can't.
You can't get paid out for comp time.
They can't get paid out for comp time unless they quit.
That's, yeah.
The only way to get paid out for comp time is if you quit.
And then I'm going to tell Stephanie who does payroll, don't process any more requests for payout. And I'm going to say, look, if you had an employee who was already planning on this, we'll give you till April first before we enforce this. But on April first, we're not paying out active employees for comp.
Yeah, but so what are you going to do if that ends up happening anyway?
We just.
If somebody ends up quitting or leaving or.
Well, if they quit or leave, they get paid out.
Okay. You know, all you can do is make your employer breezy really mad.
I don't think so because I've talked to the departments that this affects, the roads, the transfer station and. It's another one of Sean's. And they were all fine with it. In fact, when I talked to Sonya, the transfer station, who's the biggest offender of this, she's like, I've never been to a place where they allow that. So this is just operating as normal.
I think what you're going to run into is if you have an employee who's gathering up so much vacation and so much comp time, it's just not realistic for them to actually use it. They see it as a benefit. They're not planning on quitting anytime soon. It's a benefit that they're losing and so they.
No, because all they do is they walk into HR and say, I don't want to accrue comp time anymore. I want to get paid out for it because they already have so many hours of comp time. And then every hour they work overtime, they get paid for it.
I mean, that's the punishment for not being proactive. But it's like, you know, Charlie was telling me the other day that he's worked so much on this general plan. He's a communicator. It's only two hundred forty hours of comp time. And so like how realistically, how much can you use in compare alongside you're already accruing vacation?
Yeah. So what Scott would say is, look, Charlie, stop accruing comp time.
Yeah.
Start taking.
Get paid out.
Start taking vacation. You have to get paid off for it.
You have the department to train their employees, like think a little bit ahead and adjust as necessary.
Well, you know, you just brought up the perfect example of all the people that we employ. Charlie is one of the most brilliant and smart. Him of all people, I understand that he can't, just can't continue to accrue comp time.
So now let's say Charlie and one other person in his department who both have two hundred forty hours of comp time decide to quit in this given year. Well, now you overspent half of an FTE.
Yeah.
And. The departments pay for that. That that's the issue. So. You know, if they quit, there's not much you can do about it. But what we don't want him is him to say, okay, I want all that cash right now. It's December thirty first. I want it all in cash and now I'm over budget. So if you're okay with it, I just want to enforce the policy as is written.
Yeah, I probably am. Commissioner Harvey?
Don't push back. No.
Well, right now would be the time.
Well, the thing is, is what you do is you do take options away from employees, but they ought to be able to budget. This is not a problem.
And they have so many options. I really don't feel like we're taking anything away from them.
You know, I can't believe that there are people that do it. I mean, I lived under this. I lived under this tyranny.
Oh, geez.
But I didn't, I wouldn't even have imagined you could have even thought about to do that. I never thought that. So I mean, in the twenty seven years, I never thought to do that.
Well, and our policies never allowed us to do it. But people have started to do it and it didn't get stopped. And so now it's kind of escalated. Okay, let's jump onto the budgets if that's okay, because that's the big. So what you have in front of you is a list of projects that we started in twenty twenty one that did not get completed.
Yep.
See you.
That.
See you, Chris.
Commission or department heads would like to roll over. This is, I do this every year around this time.
What's the problem with this? Is there any problem with rolling it over?
I don't see any problems other than you need permission from any.
if you told him, if the employee told you that I'm gonna book that and then I'm gonna take it at the end of the year, just so you know, I am gonna take it. Well, at least then you could go ahead and book it and you knew how to account for it. See, so it's the fact that he doesn't know causes him to go nuts.
Yeah.
If he knew, it wouldn't bother him at all.
Yeah, but how do you predict that? I mean, you can't predict when the employee's gonna decide they want extra cash.
Is it put in the same pot as vacation time?
No, it's not, so. No, they do get paid out if they quit. If they quit, they are, they're entitled to that comp time.
Yeah, what happens, they take it out of this pot and put it back in this pot, and that's what drives Scott nuts because he has certain amount of monies in there. And when they move that back over, it overruns his money.
Yeah.
As I said, this is an exercise in keeping Scott sane, that's all it is.
So.
Well, not really. If we uh if we get reported to the state because of it.
Yeah.
Then, under that scenario, I'd be pushing back a little too.
Self-reporting.
I think the fact that you can change it going forward should allow the employees enough flexibility.
There's so much flexibility with it as the policy is currently written.
Hold on now, so hard you say it's self-reporting.
It's self-reporting.
Would you say that as if he's got the uh ability to not report it?
It's self-reporting.
I know, but if you don't report it and they find it on the next audit, then now it's gonna be more than just a singer. They might even give you a penalty.
So not reporting it is not an option, so not only, so you have to personally sign that you're not aware of anything.
Okay.
I mean, you don't, you don't go down that road, you don't even go down that road. There's, there's personal liability for signing that, not just professional liability.
Under that scenario, we wouldn't want you.
No, we're gonna take it.
Yeah, you get what I'm saying.
So you're just poking him, aren't you?
He's just poking me, that's fine.
And I'm rather having a good time with you, so if you just let me continue, that would be really good, but otherwise you can be however you want.
Scott, what do you want to do about it?
I want you to let me talk to in a department head meeting protect potentially tomorrow morning and just remind department heads that employees don't get paid out for comp time. Unless they tell us they're going, I mean, they either get paid for overtime or they accrue comp time, they can't.
You can't get paid out for comp time. They can't get paid out for comp time unless they quit.
That, that's, yeah.
The only way to get paid out for comp time is if you quit.
And then I'm gonna tell Stephanie, who does payroll, don't process any more requests for payout. And I'm gonna say, look, i- if you had an employee who was already planning on this, we'll give you till April first before we enforce this. But on April first, we're not paying out active employees for comp.
Yeah, but so what are you gonna do if that ends up happening anyway?
We just.
If somebody ends up quitting or leaving or.
Well, if they quit or leave, they get paid out.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, all you're gonna do is make your employee breezy really mad.
I don't think so, cause I've talked to the departments that this affects, the roads, um the transfer station and uh it's another one of Sean's, um and they were all fine with it. In fact, when I talked to Sonya, the transfer station, who's the biggest offender of this, she's like, I've never been in a place where they allow that, so this is just operating as normal.
I think what you're gonna run into is if you have an employee who's gathering up so much vacation and so much comp time, it's just not realistic for them to actually use it, they see it as a benefit, they're not planning on quitting anytime soon. It's a benefit that they're losing, so they.
No, cause all they do is they walk into HR and say, I don't want to accrue comp time anymore, I want to get paid out for it. Cause they already have so many hours of comp time and then every hour they work overtime, they get paid for it.
I mean, that's the punishment for not being proactive. But it's like, you know, Charlie was telling me the other day that he's worked so much on this general plan, he's a, communicates in like two hundred forty hours of comp time. And so like how realistically, how much can you use in compare alongside you're already accruing vacation?
Yeah, so what Scott would say is, look, Charlie, stop accruing comp time. Taking vacation, you have to get paid off for it.
You have the department to train their employees, like think a little bit ahead and adjust as necessary.
Well, you know, you just brought up the perfect example of all the people that we employ. Charlie's one of the most brilliant and smart, him of all people, I understand that he can't, just can't continue to accrue comp time.
So now let's say Charlie and one other person in his department who both have two hundred forty hours of comp time decide to quit in this given year. Well, now you overspent half of an FTE.
Yeah.
And the departments pay for that. That, that's the issue, so. You know, if they quit, there's not much you can do about it, but what we don't want him is him to say, okay, I want all that cash right now. It's December thirty first, I want it all in cash and now I'm over budget. So if you're okay with it, I just want to enforce the policy as is written.
Commissioner Harvey?
Don't push back, no?
Well, right now would be the time.
Well, the thing is, is what you do is you do take options away from employees, but they ought to be able to budget, this is not a problem.
And they have so many options, I really don't feel like we're taking anything away from them.
You know, I can't believe that there are people that do it. I mean, I lived under this, I lived under this tyranny.
Oh geez.
But I didn't, I wouldn't even have imagined you could have even thought about to do that. I never thought that, so I mean, in the twenty seven years, I never thought to do that.
Well, and their policies never allowed us to do it, but people have started to do it and it didn't get stopped, and so now it's kind of escalated. Okay, let's jump onto the budgets if that's okay, cause that's the, the big. So what you have in front of you is a list of projects that we started in twenty twenty one that did not get completed.
Yep, see ya.
That uh.
See you, Chris.
Commission or uh department heads would like to roll over. This is, I do this every year around this time.
What's the problem with this? Is there any problem with rolling it over?
I don't see any problems other than you need permission from, they need permission from you. The list is about four times larger than it's ever been before. And.
You know what the problem is part of that?
I do. Supply chains issues are killing us. So usually we're a million, million and a half, I'm at five point eight million dollars.
Holy cats.
Yeah. Now, a million seven of that is the transfer station equipment that we ordered that we knew had a long lead time, so that's a million seven. You've got some other big ones here like the second floor annex building, that's seven hundred thousand dollars. You've got the theater replacements, if you always see, see, that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Ice sheet expansion, that's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that was grant funded by the way.
That's all I study, that's not.
Yeah, but that work's not done, so they're asking to roll that over. The HR project is a multi-year project, so they're just asking to roll that over. So as I looked through here, there's only a couple that I really want to point out to you, one is the Center of Excellence. They were awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year for three years. They did not spend the full hundred and fifty thousand dollars the first year that they had this, and so they're asking for permission to roll that over.
What's the penalty if, if uh if we don't spend it? Do we have to give it back?
It's our money. No, this is Weaver County money, so we're spending that restricted RDA housing money, so it's like Weaver County granting Weaver County its own money.
Okay.
So there's no consequence if we spend it with her, there's no consequence to keep it, other than you know, once that money's gone, it's gone.
Of course, in her case, her budget's so small. She really, she's already talked to me about this, rolling it over. We rolled a little over last year, we did some for, and she's, she would like this again. Just it helps keep her alive, you know?
Helps keep all of them, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
I don't have an issue with it.
Okay.
It just happens to be longer, there's a couple of like you mentioned.
What other ones besides her?
That, that was the one I wanted to talk about. Um I was gonna talk to you a little bit about the sheriff fund for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That was a mistake they made in their budget, they got a grant for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and forgot to put the money in to spend the grant. So it's covered with grant funds, but it was just a.
A hundred and thirty?
Oh gee, gee, that's too bad.
Where's that at?
That's um in the sheriff's office, it's training contract funded by grant.
That's a shame.
Up in the third section. Yeah, right there.
All right there.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, that's too bad, they just lost that.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Oh gee.
Well, we have a grant, so it doesn't cost the county any more money. We have to give the hundred and thirty thousand back.
Okay.
Other than that, those are the uh.
We're getting you there.
I don't. That, everything else was on a purchase order or approved budget.
That one point seven's a big deal for the transfer station.
Yeah.
That's, you know, so there's, right there is, is thirty percent of it or more of the, of the increase, so yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's a lot larger this year than it normally is, but there's, you know.
I think this is, Scott, I think this is gonna end up being a, a new standard. New way we have to operate.
Next few years, I think so, there's a lot of issues, yeah, I agree.
And things are, so when I was out to Lifetime the other day, they say, they have, we have no idea how things are gonna get worse. Because the same pressure that uh Russia is putting on Ukraine, China's putting on Taiwan.
Yeah. Well, so they went over this the other day. Sunflowers and sunflowers seed and oil, number one producer in the world, Ukraine. Barley, number two producer in the world, uh Ukraine. One of the grains, I think it was just wheat, the number four producer in the world, Ukraine. Uh oil, exports, number two producer in the world, Ukraine. Well, when you start looking at all that, I mean, if any of those uh suffer a substantial disruption, the domino effect will be amazing. You know, uh sunflower oil, uh that goes, you know, that is uh put in so many different products that manufacture. So uh, I don't know, it, you, you don't hardly know what to think about this on how the effect's gonna be.
I was in Wincow on Saturday, I went to go buy a ten pound bag of flour, it normally is three dollars and fifty to three dollars and eighty cents, and it was eight dollars and fifty four cents.
Are you kidding? For ten pounds of flour?
Quite right, yeah. It was insane, I was like, I, I didn't buy any, cause I was like, I could get twenty five pounds for that price.
Yeah.
Week ago. So.
And that was in Wincow?
That was Wincow, Wincow in uh Roy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm impressed he knows the exact price of ten pounds of flour.
I uh.
Was it enriched, by the way?
It was the brown bag, I get the brown.
I kinda laugh about that, but it shows you the kind of detail, Scott. He told me a while back how his uh, uh he follows his food bill. And he told me within pennies of how much his food bill's gone up lately.
I have data all the way back to two thousand and twelve. On my groceries.
That's fantastic.
Right, I mean, that's, that's what I do now. Okay, so if you don't have any issues with this, I'm gonna put this on a public hearing to.
Do you ever roll over any of your food?
For your wife, to give her a little extra money, do you ever roll any over like this?
Uh yeah. I uh, I actually do all the grocery shopping in my house.
Wow, wow, right.
Yeah, I don't know why, I just saw what you know.
I can tell you why, they're never, she never brought home enough Mountain Dew, this way he can put it in the.
Yeah, there you go.
I laugh at that, but uh I learned as an auditor how people hide cash and spend money. And I use some of those techniques to help hide how much I spent on Mountain Dew.
No question.
Cash receipts, yeah, just no credit card.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How much, so how much has Mountain Dew gone?
What amazes you is that he would admit, I know, I love.
My wife knows it's. I drink, I, I.
Yeah, somebody like you should have married an accountant, so you two could have sat and debated this.
My wife started to be an accountant, she hated it, she dropped out.
I did too.
She did accounting class and went into business information system, so.
Well, business administration, that's a half accountant.
Yeah, but she's more into the running, the business side.
I know. No.
Yeah, anyway. Okay, you will see this on a, an upcoming, we have to do as a public hearing, I'll let you know beforehand, but it'll be a public hearing to amend the budget.
How we still doing? So you, we haven't even gone through the first quarter. But the indications we got from Sarah Tolliver the other day with regards to the tourism was really promising.
So our sales tax across the board is up again, we're having another banner year, I think the big reason for that is actually inflation, not real growth. Um we're having a regular growth plus seven percent inflation. So um in the next, I think on the fourteenth or the next work session, I'm gonna present to you the preliminary twenty twenty one year end results. Where we're at, so, yeah.
The other day I was watching a, a deal, I think we're talking about inflation in the Intermountain area being at eight percent, seven point nine. And now they going through the whole thing and then they stopped and said, this does not include construction supply. Because it's a twenty one percent. Construction material is a twenty one percent, Arv, and we feel that, but my point, we feel that, yeah.
Yeah.
Boy, it's tough right now. The only thing that I can smile about there is, is inflation hits and you sell it, I book a little of that too.
It's called profit.
I know. Yeah.
When you got it, well, you got a twenty two million dollar inventory.
Well, Target, they're advertising fifteen to twenty four dollars an hour to start, depending on your experience, twenty four dollars an hour to start at Target.
Are they at Target?
Yeah, that's where the news article said today, I was reading it, they, they said, they say the range is between fifteen and twenty four, so I assume you have to have some experience to get to twenty.
Well, most plumbers now are starting in the twenties, right out of high school.
Hmm.
Uh and they'll put you in school and go to that, so you know, twenty, I mean, that's forty, forty four to a thousand a year, right out of high school, plus school, to get in, yeah, and oh yeah, they pay your apprenticeship. Yeah, the uh whoever you're working for, you don't pay your own, and so it's like, oh my gosh, are you kidding me?
I remember making four dollars and fifty five cents at Matrix Marketing.
Wow.
Or it turned to Convergys, yeah.
Rolling in it.
I was rolling in it then, high school kid, four bucks wasn't very much either, back then.
Yeah, but you were glad to even have a job.
I was, that wasn't farming. Cause I worked for Lane McFarland Farming before I was sixteen. Man, that's the job that taught me I wanted to have air conditioning for a living.
What did that do, Scott?
Yeah. Yeah, and it was hard work, I'm glad that I did it, I wasn't glad at the time, it taught me a lot to work, but man, picking up potatoes and putting them in a bucket and middle of the sun, just in the middle of the day, sun shining on you.
That's what you did.
Yeah, well, that and pumpkins, I mean, we did lots of stuff, yeah.
I started in ninety three in Los Angeles with the masters with Price Waterhouse, my starting salary was thirty eight grand.
Really? And now a kid out of high school makes considerably more than that.
Yeah.
That's um, it's amazing.
Time to change.
You. Okay, well, if you're okay with this, you don't have any questions, that's all I have for you, commissioners.
So, we employ a guy out of high school to drive a truck, sixteen dollars an hour, we give him sixteen seventy five. That's what we give him, and then we give him a safety bonus, if he doesn't get in any accidents, give him seventy five cents more an hour for safety bonus. So seventeen fifty, and then we give him a bonus, uh we take ten percent of the company's profits and give to the employees. So they get a nice bonus on top of that, so uh you know, they're making eighteen, eighteen, twenty five an hour. Well, uh you know, times, I mean, that's almost forty thousand, and you could be really a very intelligent worker, great west. I mean, we're down there with McDonald's fighting for the worst of the worst.
Yeah.
Just because uh if they can drive a pickup, we'll take you.
I'll tell you what, though, it's sure nice going in there, the guys know what you're talking about and you can get whatever you need. All right, well, we got, what's the next on our agenda, Chair?
Next on our agenda, where are we at here? It's one thirty, flagship CRA, Brandon Cooper. He should be sitting out there.
I'll send him in if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks you two, appreciate you do, or Rick, I mean it when I say we really appreciate what you've done there, Weaver County. Well, that's a, that's great for us and super great for you.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet. Brandon Cooper, how you doing, bud?
Mr. Cooper?
Good, good seeing you.
Good seeing you guys. Congratulations on your interview appointment.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, hopefully you end up getting that.
We'd certainly love to.
Well, we have enjoyed working with you. Well, uh send some good vibes my way.
Well, we'd love to do that. We're not totally sure what to think of the city some days, we get mixed messages out of there.
Well, I, I totally understand that.
Yeah.
My whole job is to clarify those messages. Well, we're anxious to hear some clarification today.
But go ahead, Brandon, time's yours.
So I have a presentation.
These two that are here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you wanna log in or do you wanna?
Yeah, how do you wanna do it?
Drive?
I'm gonna drive.
There you go.
Might be good for folks on the TV. Yeah, that's okay, we don't have problems. So this isn't anything that's new, we've been having this discussion since eighteen, so I just think this is a good opportunity. To refresh right before we make our final decision.
It's amazing to me that it's been, I thought this thing was all done and gone and all worked.
Yeah.
I mean, this is uh uh amazing.
It's something that we'll never do again, I can tell you that, if I have anything to do with it, um we've learned some things.
Well, there were some reasons we did it.
There was.
Hold on, what, what are we talking about now?
Well, it, it, this, this CRA that we gave.
Okay.
Yeah.
Honor. What we've learned, okay.
Yeah.
That was before my.
Yeah. Um so I'll wait for the presentation, that'll help us. Well, yeah, it has taken a while and I don't blame you for thinking it was just done and gone.
I, I mean, there's a lot of things that have come and gone since this thing came.
A ton, yeah. Yeah.
Is it, is it these guys or they're gonna go back to Minnesota and then go to Reno and then go to wherever and we were gonna do an overlay?
Uh yeah, that was our initial thought, but then we decided that actually, when we ended up giving the final letter, which only Mayor Caldwell uh signed, but it was kind of after all of our discussion. Um we decided to do it after BDO expired, that was the best way to do it.
I've been not been included in that discussion, so I'm about to learn something.
Yeah.
But the overlay is the last thing I remember.
And that became, that proved to be way too challenging.
I just feel that was the, okay.
So we have to email to this computer here, cause she didn't have that hot, so.
Got it. Got it. So what's new?
Well, you guys, how'd you turn out on your appropriations down there?
Um fifty fifty.
Did you?
Yeah, and I appreciate your response to me on my email. Um we asked directly or indirectly, we had two projects, one was the water line out of the canyon.
Right.
And one was a secured building out of the Union Station to help with our defense tech ecosystem. And we got the, the, the SCIF, we got the secured building, but we didn't get.
You didn't get the water line? You didn't get the water line? No, I thought that'd been just opposite.
That's what I thought too. Now, we don't want to jinx anything, nothing's done until the fourth, but.
Yeah, we understand they printed the list and it's out, so.
Yeah, nothing changes.
Yeah, nothing's gonna change much from there.
So play that, that comment, cause I'd like to understand.
You can drive that.
Thank you, um from your perspective too. All right, so this is a presentation that I actually gave in twenty eighteen. Um when we all met together and, and Commissioner Jenkins, you weren't there, Commissioner Frohren wasn't there. So I think it was just Commissioner Harvey, we went to the school district.
And Commissioner Ebert, wait, the Ogden School District?
Uh huh.
You did go with this to the Ogden School District?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I came on in uh, in uh, yeah, June.
Yeah.
Or July of twenty eighteen, so I'm, and I do remember going up there, Harv, with you, so I, I could have been here for this.
So the idea was a little bit outside of the box, was that um Armour had an opportunity to, to grow their distribution warehousing facility. They had other locales that they were looking at, Reno being one of them, they were the most aggressive in their, in their incentive package. Um and so they were building, you know, what they uh needed in terms to, in terms of staying. It also meant that they were, would potentially vacate the, the um existing headquarters that they had at the Armour, at the American Can Building. So we wanted to keep what they had and then grow what they were looking to expand. Um so I, this is all just information about the impact of Armour since they uh came to us in two thousand and I think six or something. We talked about some of their economic um uh impacts, some of the accolades that we've gotten, some of the other companies that have came because of them. Uh and this is really where the rubber meets the road, they were going to go to the state and uh ask for one point three million dollars in an ed tip package.
I thought, well, the state was represented, we were all meeting in Caldwell's office there.
Yeah, they were on the phone, I believe. Um and they were willing to do the ed tip package, they wanted to see the local match and that's where we came in. There was also another request for three hundred thousand from the Industrial Assistance Fund, um that.
Who was based on two thousand jobs up to three hundred thousand?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so the jobs had to come.
Right, it's all post performance.
Yeah.
All of these are, yeah. Um, they also, so from the, that was the state math, the state, um, incentive, the local match included. Um, uh, lease reduction on the building that they were gonna take, which is the building they're in now. And then tax increment in the form of real property and personal property, and that's about two point four million dollars there. And that's kind of the spreadsheet that we, um, did our analysis from that showed the participating entities, which is just the, the school district. The county and the city to get to the, to the two point one and, and the three hundred sixty. Uh, so that's kind of how that spread out. So they, uh, were happy with about a four point five million dollar incentive. That was in contrast to Reno's, if you remember, over nine million dollars.
Yeah, I know, we were way short, way short.
And that is surprises.
Right.
I mean, uh, Reno, they've been that way for years.
Yeah, yeah, Texas had a big one. So they, they needed to get approval by the GOED board after meeting with us and, uh.
And this is where we've lost our knowledge, what's happened right now.
Right. So once they received that, then we decided, back to what you were saying, Commissioner, about, um, not knowing about the overlay versus the other thing. We, we looked at it instead of overlaying that one parcel in the existing district, we decided to let BDO retire. Everybody got the adjustment in the basis. Right? So the county got their adjustment, we got our adjustment and then apply a new CRA over just that one parcel.
I see.
And that way we're not double dipping.
Right.
You know what I mean? So that's what it has happened. Um, we've created the project area, um, over just that one parcel. Um, it's, and then we've crafted. Yep, we've crafted all the interlocal agreements and that's what's in front of you, uh, now is the approval for that. It's a hundred percent. Um, participation for ten years up to, um, that, that amount that was listed, um, I believe.
When did the school come in?
Hundred.
Hundred?
Everybody's a hundred.
Okay.
Yep. And again, it's capped, it's capped at the, at the amount for the ten years, whichever comes first.
You know, normally, I don't think we'd have done a hundred percent. But, uh, we were right on the verge of losing these guys.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, in fact, they'd all but given you notice they were leaving, right?
Pretty much.
It was that close. And so.
And all the other companies would fall.
And we kind of decided at the last minute to go there. So we had our backs up against wall on this one step, a little.
This was a, you know, this.
And this was a bird in the hand because it's not like they were gonna move in. They were here.
Right.
Go back a couple of slides if you would, Brandon, because just briefly, I want Stephanie to see the portfolio that Armour has.
That one. Yeah. So this isn't all Armour, um, companies, but Solomon, Atomic, Mavic, Sunto, uh, Envy Now.
Good. Not good.
Not good. Uh, that's about it. So most of that first column. But then the rest of those companies have come to the county and to the city.
Yeah, I thought Scott was here.
Yep, Scott's here.
Yeah.
Because of Armour. So it was a big deal.
Well, Roswell's here.
Yeah, they're, all those folks are here.
Yeah. Yeah. So. You can see why we decided that.
This was a unique deal.
It was unique.
Yep.
Yeah, and we're, and Brandon and I were just talking about that, you know, the rest on that we're looking at putting a policy in, but there will be some, there will be some situations.
We're all kind of settled into seventy percent, about where we wanna be and we're not gonna go anymore and. But in this case, like I say, they were here. So we were not, just not gonna get somebody. We were gonna lose somebody.
Yeah.
That made it, that was a difference.
Absolutely.
And we all agreed on that. We kind of got together and all decided, yeah, this is one of those cases where. We gotta.
Yeah, I remember going, I remember going to the school district and then meeting with everybody.
Yeah.
After, you know, it was a big deal.
Was.
Yeah, so, um, the school district remembered it that way, so they approved the interlocal, uh, the city approved the interlocal, so.
Samuel's, he's a good guy.
Yeah, he is. He gets it. Gets it. So I, I brought the letter that the mayor wrote back in eighteen, just to refresh your memory, um. If you wanted to look at that. But it's one of those things where. You know, we were in a weird spot when we did it. Times kind of rolled on. Everything's happened as we had predicted, right? That they did their investment, they kept the companies here, um, they expanded, the state did the ed tip.
All's good. Happy day.
All's good. Everything's exactly how we.
So tomorrow you're here.
Well, I wanted to make sure that we didn't have any misunderstandings. We still have the, the.
I didn't sign it.
Yeah, we have, you guys haven't voted at a.
It has, we have to take a legislative action.
And they want a retroactive, this, this year, January first?
Right.
Yeah, so they want to trigger on January first.
We had a meeting like this, it was six months ago. I don't remember exactly when we had it. Yeah, I pulled up the dates, um, in case anyone really cared, but yeah, we've had a couple. Yeah, and we reminded, and so at that point, the commissioner said move forward, but then we just. I'm not sure what happened, but the final agreement was never adopted.
Yeah, I'm not sure Gage will be real happy with this. I ain't gonna say, but we did this before Gage was here.
Yeah. We will do that. Amen.
All right, we'll get this on your agenda.
And make sure that Chris Crockett sees it, oh, just for.
Yeah.
Make sure.
And I think Roger Brunker had some questions on it. Maybe you've already resolved that with him, I know. All the questions you've given me, I've resolved and given you back a final. I'm assuming that included Chris's comments and legal reviews.
Yeah.
No, Chris.
Oh, yeah, we have Brandon. Let me double check on that, because Brandon Quinney did that.
That's right.
I'll double check on that, so.
Because.
I think there was, there was like one or two words we were gonna change and, and that was the only slide sent to you.
I revise.
I revise that and send it back up. Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I mean, if you would, just make sure that you turns out the last version, latest version of Roger Brunker has it, because he's on ministers. Yeah, so Ball's in your court there. I, I did everything you asked me to do. Hey, we can talk about nine hundred million other things, but I'm sure you have some things to do.
No, no, we were gonna just nap. That's about what we.
Yeah.
So, uh. Yeah, we want twenty million help run that sewer out to the, uh. Megaside out there.
Did you get it?
About that.
Really?
Yeah, that puts us way short.
Did they say what?
No.
Cause that's totally ARPA eligible.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's not only eligible, it's, it's in the plan.
Yeah, twenty million dollars would have gone a long way for us.
But you got zero on your water coming down the canyon. And that's totally ARPA eligible.
Now, the, um. The SCIF money was not ARPA, that was just budget. Right? Um, so I don't understand if they kept some of the ARPA money out to fund infrastructure stuff later.
I don't know. We don't know.
That's just budget surplus that we got, bill of bills kind of thing.
We'll have to see. Hey, I don't know where you go on this. We got a ton happening in Weaver County and Augs City right now. A ton happening. And if we could fund it all, we're gonna have some great years ahead, but. Problem is, is they're putting us in a point where we're gonna have to start picking here on some of these. You know what I mean?
Like what?
Oh, you know. We've got, uh. We're laden with snow, uh, uh, ski resorts lately. You know, snow basins coming up. They've got a big CRA in, uh, Nori Valley. They're getting ready to start a great big one and, uh. Up at, uh, Powder Mountain, all of a sudden they're doing something. Uh, they got new ownership in, a new, uh, uh, management and they're taking a whole new look at things and.
And there's another development coming on the backside of that.
Yeah. That's, yeah, not gonna be in, uh, Cash Valley. It's actually just in the nook of Weaver County.
Yeah.
So we just got a ton happening right now, Brandon. And, uh, you know, this, uh, mega site out there. We had the five developer property owners walking together the other day. And they want to bring twelve hundred acres in and put on sewer and build twenty-four hundred homes. Right next to the mega site. It's like, are you kidding me?
Can't get.
Oh, we can't get the sewer to them. Well, this is tough. Yeah, we're not sure what we're gonna do.
Does, um, is your ARPA money program?
Not yet. We've been holding off because of that. But Augs City goes down there and says, well, Weaver County won't even commit to their ARPA dollars yet. So you guys kind of gives a little bit of a black eye down there.
How, how did that go down?
Well, we don't really know. We just heard about it. You know, we hear about secondhand.
Yeah. We did the ARPA application process. We, we received thirty-eight separate.
Yeah, we, we've done our process.
Sewer districts from broadband. We have a hundred and thirty million dollars worth of requests for our fifty million dollars of ARPA funds, so we've been evaluating. In fact, fourteen for presenting to you all different projects and we've done a ton of work in it, but we haven't actually said, okay, you won.
No, we didn't get any awards out yet. So that's why we took it on the chin down there. In fact, we hadn't awarded anything, but there's lots of counties haven't awarded anything yet.
Well, I don't know why we would ever say that because we haven't spent, we haven't decided a single penny of where we're.
Yeah. Well, we think it was great. Well, we don't know. We don't, I shouldn't have said that. I take that back, guys. This is, I shouldn't have said that. We don't know who said that. But anyway. You guys want money from us, though, you know?
Well, I don't know.
For your water line.
Now, because if the, that money was meant to match our money to match the state's money.
Well, yeah. So, yeah. See, you're, you're in the same. Position with your water line where ours with our sewer line now.
And all that money was literally for water sewer infrastructure.
Yeah.
It does not.
At least in your case, you have active people who are on the line, who can foot some of that bill. In our case, none of that exists.
Right.
It doesn't even exist, so this is all money to front it. And, uh. We're not, I don't know how we're gonna do this.
So the word I got was that, um, the DNR thought that our. And I don't know.
Who's DNR?
Natural resources.
Oh, DNR.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said DNR. Oh, DNR, yeah.
DNR.
Uh, natural resources.
They were floating the idea that we could go to them and get a low interest loan for the money we need to build the water line. Which I'm sure is possible.
Yeah, it is.
But it's not the same thing as a fifty million dollar grant from the ARPA. Same thing.
Yeah. Same thing as.
I told you to ask for fifty, settle it.
I know, we should have asked for fifty and got fifteen.
Well, we asked for fifteen, got zero.
Yeah, so that's a good point, Brandon, so. Doesn't guarantee anything.
So you know the game up there better than anybody does. Is it? Is it the fact that there's so much going to Northern Utah that they get SCIF squeamish about that?
Yeah. We heard lots of people complaining about the fact that we put in for too much.
Collectively.
Uh, collectively. Uh, you and us.
So because we got our crap together and everybody else has got diarrhea, we still suffer.
Yeah, we had a couple of really important projects, your water line, our sewer line, and they were big dollar.
Big doll.
How much coordination did you have before you put in with us, before you put in for your stuff?
None.
That's why I emailed you. Because I was afraid that. That there might be some penalty. If they thought we were coming at them without coordination.
Yeah.
Look, we've been trying to coordinate for six or eight months. Tomorrow's gonna be the first time. Hey, Mr. Vice President, I made it.
Yeah. Okay. We're just sitting here talking about our, uh. Award from the state and how much money we all got.
Well, we got, no, we got five million for the.
Yeah.
Out west.
Which, and you know how much Brandon was just telling us how much they got for the water line coming down the canyon.
How much? Brandon, what are you looking for?
Man, Gage, we really took it on the chin in this whole thing.
Yeah, I was afraid of that because we had two damn million requests in Northern Utah.
We just, Gage, we just.
Those were the words out of Steph's mouth. She just said that.
Augen City was not, uh, it's like my grandfather's dad helping us. You don't count the money bills in your bank account.
So, I, but, uh, Brandon just said the same thing. We didn't help them either. So we didn't sit around and, uh, we didn't, uh, coordinate any of these asks.
Dollars.
But I'm not sure it would have helped, the ask would have been the same either way.
That wouldn't have been a, been a damn difference because basically we had too many, the only thing we would, could have done to improve it. Is if Augen City would have dropped out or somebody else would have dropped out and said, we'll cut our request by half. Give it to Weaver County or vice versa.
What were the other requests?
Would you have?
No, besides the county and the city, what were the other Northern Utah requests?
Melissa Freegang had, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, three million in there.
The Midas thing?
She got that. She got that.
Yeah.
My, so.
Midas was big.
They didn't really count that against us.
Yeah, I don't think so.
What about the sheriff? Did he get any?
Oh, that was the other one.
That was a big one.
Well, the sheriff's coming out of the, uh, billion dollar ARPA that they're, they're working on right now. That's good, that's coming out of different pot.
Well, so didn't we have an application for that pot originally?
We had five of them.
Yeah.
We got five of them.
So are we, are we still got a shot at that pot?
Yeah, we still have shots for four or five. Yeah, yeah.
That's five million or five projects.
Five projects.
Yeah.
And I can't remember the exact amount.
And that's what I was saying, this was just. The ARPA money hasn't been.
Yeah.
Oh, so we're still in the running for that.
Yeah, we're.
Okay.
Where it should come from.
And you can.
Well, this is good to engage.
We're still in the running, I mean, they've got, you know. I'm not optimistic. We'll get more than maybe one or two of those.
Of course.
But they still got.
We only, we only.
Yeah.
That's good.
Felt, uh, in the beginning, like we only had a shot really at one.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
So we'll see what happens there.
But that's been worked on this week.
Yeah, the ARPA side.
Yeah.
So what'd you get for your water line?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Zero?
Out of the budget. We might get it out of the ARPA side.
But if you're probably in the same situation, for that particular money, it'll come out of ARC if you get any.
Yeah, and that's probably why maybe they didn't do it in the budget.
Oh, I get it.
Yeah, I didn't understand that just right now, that there was the ARPA side too.
No, that's.
Well, that's good.
That qualifies for ARC.
Well, and the billion dollars is not chump change. That's a lot.
Well, there's probably four billion in requests.
Probably ought to take a second to talk about this too.
Oh, yeah. So we got that.
We've got LLI. I haven't gone through it.
Hey, quick question.
Just got it five minutes ago.
Yeah.
So Chris told me Mountain Tails.
Well, so our budget we talked about.
Well, this is a application. For depot driving?
All.
Depot driving to Old Street?
Yeah.
I have somebody that has offered to do it for us and that, but I said, let me check it. What we want to do is just make sure that you don't have practice.
Okay.
Well, well.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're okay with Casey Scott, aren't you? I think he's Mrs. Scott's nicest boy, okay? I guess that's a yes.
Casey Scott?
For what?
Mountain View?
Not you.
Okay, I'll contact him.
Casey Scott, you're okay with Casey Scott? For title work? Does he work in Mountain View? Does he work in Mountain View?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't have an issue with that. I trust your judgment a ton there, Gage.
Yeah, you're like the doctor. I know that he'll take care, you know, title work, it's like anything else, you text him, hire somebody to take care of it.
I, uh, that's, he's good. You know, I like to do business with people who do business with us and help us out, he has.
He has.
You know, so he's a giver.
Yeah, we volunteered for our golf tournament.
All right, well, here we go.
So, is this what Brandon was here for?
Uh, well, no, he was here talking about, uh, the, uh, RDA that we approved, the CRA. Just prior to you coming on.
What was that?
It's when we were gonna lose, uh. Armor.
Well, that, yes.
That is. That's that one. And, uh, he's, he's saying even though it's taken, uh, three years, here he's here now and they're ready to go and it's all done.
More than that, Scott, more than three, it's almost four and a half, almost five.
Really?
Yeah.
Anyway, that was a hundred percent, Gage.
That's what.
Well.
With what we knew back then. I'm hoping we didn't make a lot of people do that in the future.
We didn't. In fact, we told Brandon it'll probably never go above seventy percent again. But at the time, we were gonna lose armor. Uh, they told us that.
Companies with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, he, they came in, what's it been, well, this is before.
You were here. Just before you were here.
Yeah, but they came in and reminded us about it, uh, with the mayor like six months ago and then.
Yeah, he said that, that they were here not long ago.
Yeah, and then he blamed it on us that we didn't respond back. Well, you check the emails from everybody, he never gave us the paperwork. It's what it is, yeah, so.
Anyway.
Just in case your grandpa didn't teach you this.
It was just.
It takes, it takes to lose, uh, decades to find a customer, takes a moment to lose.
Boy, isn't that a truth?
You did teach me that.
So it's, we figured this was a good thing, didn't you tell me, think so?
Yeah, I, yeah, we all, we voted, you weren't here yet to vote, but me and Harv did.
Good, good.
And, uh.
I were a hundred percent.
Yeah.
We were a hundred percent.
Well, I wasn't, well.
I might have been two ones on that, but probably not.
Yeah, well, we'd had to see.
We'd have thought you had a slot.
You know, uh, at the time Reno was in here with an offer that was double ours.
At least?
Reno.
Nevada.
Oh, Reno. Yeah, they were in here with an offer that was double ours.
Minnesota or someplace back there. No, we, you know, we didn't, we, we don't wanna lose them, I just, I just wish I, wish Ogden City would play a little more. There in the sandbox.
We're gonna talk about that.
Yeah, we are.
That's sandbox play rules, yeah.
All right, so here we go.
Look at this handsome crew.
Two o'clock.
Where we at?
Let me tell you what. Two o'clock, we have a discussion on Old Snow Basin Road, Noggin Valley Garbage Service. Sean Wilkson, Bill Ross, Gary Meyer, and Joe Hadley. I was gonna say the Wellabalsom crew.
Let, let's go ahead and start with, uh, the garbage, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So Commissioners, a couple of weeks ago, I came and talked to you about waste management. They have asked for, uh, three pers- three point six percent CPI increase. This year, which the contract allows them to request, and that's just part of the contract. They also requested an extraordinary adjustment. And I mentioned before that it was eight point one two percent, I believe. Uh, so all told, it was about twelve percent that they were asking for, for twenty twenty-two, starting in April. So we went back to them and we said, we just, we can't justify that.
So.
That's too damn high.
It is, so show us, either, either show us some data that, that shows why that's the case. Or, uh, let, let's see what we can figure out. So we talked to Commissioner Jenkins, Scott Park and I and Bill. And, uh, Scott gave us some numbers that makes sense to us as far as inflation and what's really going on. And what, what Weaver County has seen. So what we proposed back to waste management. Was the three point six percent plus an additional four point four percent to bring a total of.
A half.
Eight percent.
Eight percent.
Yeah, that's where we're at. So, we feel like that is fair, we, we recognize that waste management has incurred additional costs.
Why have they incurred additional costs?
The, the price of gas, the price of materials, the cost of labor, all of that has gone up.
That's the extraordinary part.
Same for us, same for.
Yeah, if we hadn't just experienced and reacted identical to this.
Correct.
We wouldn't have done it, but we did.
Yeah. And the contract does allow them to ask for that extraordinary increase. So what that amounts to, if we say. We will do the three point six percent CPI plus the additional four point four percent. It means that a regular, the first container, regular first container. Will go from fourteen seventy-nine, which it is right now, to fifteen ninety-seven per quarter. So a dollar and.
Per quarter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dollar eighteen, eighteen cents increase.
A quarter, a quarter, so yeah, it's almost five bucks a year.
Yeah.
Just shy of five bucks a year.
God, I thought I was paying like forty, forty-five or fifty.
Oh, so all told, that's probably what you're paying. So per quarter, cause that doesn't, that's.
Yeah, that's a monthly charge.
Oh, that's, so that's your increase.
Right.
Yep, so, um, and then the second, can, second and third and additional containers, those will go up. Uh, thirty-six, well, sixty-six cents total. So they'll go from eight twenty-six up to eight ninety-two, well, and that's more than that, thirty.
So fifth, so sixteen bucks a month times three is kind of what we're.
Exactly.
Is that right?
Exactly.
That's correct.
So that's, and I would suspect that, that they would have done that anyway, even if we didn't have the contract. I mean, if, if they would have been independently serving the valley, they probably would have done it.
It would have been more.
Yeah, twelve or thirteen percent.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, Gage, you're right.
With, with us having that contract, we've been able to negotiate and get it to what we feel is a reasonable rate.
Well, that's, so I think we, if we, when we started getting complaints, I think we should make mention of that, that what we. You know, if you, if you wouldn't have had us negotiate on your behalf, could have been another four or five bucks a month.
That's correct. So with that being said, Commissioners, Commissioner Jenkins was okay with us proposing that additional four point four percent. On the first container and the additional containers overall. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good. You okay?
Commissioner Harvey.
I don't.
Okay.
All right.
I'll, I'll respond to Blake Lee and Ellie, and that will be the increase that, uh, Ogden Valley residents will see on April first.
April, wow, okay. Are they gonna send out notices or how's that gonna be message?
It will just come in their bill, so the contract specifies that there will be an increase. Now, we may get some calls about the extra.
Yeah.
Increase, and that's fine, we can answer those.
Okay.
Um, but we just wanted you to be aware that is what's gonna happen.
Good to know.
When you say it'll be included in there, uh, uh, some kind of a statement outlining.
I can ask Blake how they're going to message that.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I will.
Tell them we wanna know what that is.
You got it.
Because a few minutes now will save us a ton of time later on.
Uh-huh, that's true. Yep, or I can certainly publish the letter that Waste Management sent to us on our website, we can. Uh, distribute that, I don't know that we want to send out a mailer, that, that will cost us.
No, no.
Several thousand dollars, but.
If it's included in the bill, we just wanna know how.
Okay. I, I'll make sure it is, and if it's not, then we can figure out how we want to message that.
Maybe we'll have to put out a, a notice in the paper.
We could do that, we can put.
So let me tell you what's happened. Republic came back with a three point six percent and nothing there.
Republic did.
Yeah.
Their, yeah, theirs was just the, the three percent increase that's called for in the contract.
It's gonna happen, as soon as they figure this out, they're gonna be back anyway.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, not for this year. I don't know that we would approve it because it's already, it went into place January first.
Oh.
So.
Yeah, we did their contract.
Yes.
A month ago.
So.
Well, when this, uh, we're gonna get into a little more garbage here in a minute.
Correct. Yep.
All right, any problems with that? Commissioner Harvey?
No, I, I understand.
We'll put it on the, uh, on.
Good work getting it negotiated down. Thank you.
We'll put it on the agenda then for our, uh, Commissioner. All right, go ahead.
Okay, Commissioners, Old Snow Basin Road. I received a call from Jim Hill a few days ago and.
Who is?
He is Snow Basin's. Project manager.
Okay.
And he said, hey, we have our lobbyists down at the state, the state has a transportation infrastructure bill, and I'm not, I, I wasn't. Aware of that per se, or exactly what that entails. But he said, would you like us to get Old Snow Basin Road on the list of potential roads to be funded? And I talked to Commissioner Jenkins, he said, well, at least put it on the list, and then let's discuss that. Doesn't hurt to at least put it on the list. Now, are, are any of you aware of what that is down in the legislature this year?
What that is?
Yeah, the, the transportation infrastructure bill.
Well, they're putting that together, they actually started working on that last week.
Okay.
So we'll know where the list is.
Okay.
But that's not unusual to have a transportation infrastructure bill.
Okay, all right. No, no, it'll come out of IGG, all right, probably can't, probably comes out today. Okay, until last commit, probably today.
Yeah.
Or maybe last, anyway, it's probably not now.
So I wanted to bring Gary and just talk about, and Rick, because the. This came up in one of our planning meetings, when this, uh, snow basin proposal came to light. David Reed from the Fire District said, we are going to need a second access.
Yeah, so this is something that's just happened in the last week.
Yeah, well, but what are they gonna do, the second access for Powder Mountain, if that's.
Well, that's exact, so that's his point, and he's saying, I don't feel like Powder Mountain should have gone the way it did. There needs to be a second, an improved second access out of there.
We've been talking about that for thirty years.
Correct, so with Snow Basin, we have an access that could be used. Problem is, the upper part of the road is failing and is in really bad shape. So, the question is, number one, do we want to fix it? If so, what level of service there is acceptable? How much money do we want to put into this? Do we want to bring it back up to what it was so it can fully travel? Is this a, a partial dirt or gravel surface that we're talking about? Those are the questions that are starting to surface now, so we just wanted to bring this to your attention and start talking about it. If we get state money, then maybe that's a higher priority for us and, and we decide what we want to do.
Well, Gary, let me ask you, have you, have you put together any kind of, that's what. Sort of a snowball?
I have a very, very large snowball.
Well, what do you think that'd be?
I was kinda talking with Sean a little bit.
No, I don't like your snowballs.
And, and that's too big. Well, and I could be too big on this one, we, Ashley and I went up there last fall to start looking at some of these areas. The more we looked, the deeper we looked, we're like, holy crap, there's a lot that really needs to be done. Pretty much every culvert up there from the Art Nord parking lot, all the way up to where it's gated, it's Snow Basin, has.
The Art Nord, is that?
That's, that's where the gate is on the bottom end, once you go over the hill and then it's gated down.
Meets up with the road.
Yeah, where Wheeler Creek meets up with it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm with you now.
So pretty much from there, all the way, the rest of the way up to, to the resort, I, I, I would say every culvert needs to be replaced. And while we're in there replacing it, there's a lot of culverts that have fill that they've brought up so that the road is kind of a straight overpass. Well, that's great, the challenge is that those, those, some of those areas are on active slide areas. And when you put that much weight on an active slide area, especially with an old leaky culvert that's leaking water down into that. It just moves on you, right, and, and, and really the best, uh, mitigation effort for keeping a slide from moving. Is keeping all the water out of that material, all the water off the hillside. Basically, transport it across the slide area and then get it down without seeping into the ground. Um, so, all that, I mean, the amount of asphalt we'd have to redo, the amount of fill we'd have to remove. I told Sean probably three million or less is what I'm guessing. Now, we could go in and we could survey it this spring and come up with some more accurate, in-depth measurements.
Okay, so does three million, uh, consider an overlay and all that too?
It, it does, it does, so.
Well, that's less than I thought it'd be.
Well, that was, that, that was, yeah, I, I hadn't had a chance to talk with Joe to, to cover asphalt costs, but. Keep in mind, that's a long road, right?
Yeah.
Say, how can you do that for three million and we just are spending over almost two point four on North Ogden that's in a.
Which.
Heck of a lot better.
Which is why I'm nervous to totally commit to that.
So much slippage up on that mountain.
I know, I know. Commissioner Fower, you're, you're probably very intimately familiar with this section of road, I mean, it's, you probably use it all the time. And there, there's a lot of movement on it, and, um, ironically, I was involved as a consultant on this road. About six years ago when we did a project for the county. And some of the areas, there was as much as seven feet of fill that we removed. I mean, and that was just what we did, we pulled the asphalt off that was cracked and pulling apart, there were gaps in it that were like that. There were cer- areas where it was separated and one section had risen almost like a fault from the other, as much as a foot and a half. And so the solution, really to help the county the most was to remove all that. Go in there with a blade, with a dozer, and cut it down and leave it as dirt. So that it could still be used for races and activities in the summer and that the county could ease, more easily maintain it. Instead of having to go back and pay that.
Those portions have actually held up really well.
That's right.
If you go and they haven't settled or changed either, that's.
Yeah.
Actually, some of the better parts.
If, if you go to where that Art Nord area is, where Wheeler Creek comes up, there's one just right up the hill from it, kind of the top of that hill. And it's, it's, it's held really well, but we removed about seven feet of fill. And that seven feet of fill was overburdened, pushing on that slide. You know, take a slippery layer, you push on it, it's gonna scoot out from under you, slide out from under it, so. It, it, it gets really complicated, I mean, it, it's one of these things where we could tell you a number. But as we get into it and really see how bad it is underneath, we may not have a great idea of exactly what we're dealing with. Does that make sense? There's unknowns we may not know about.
Well, Sean, didn't they put us into that bill at five million?
I don't know that there was a number. Uh, they, they got us on the list, but I don't know if there was a number put to it.
Yeah, I don't think they probably put numbers in, I think it's just priority bill.
Yeah.
Here's our, here's our list, we're, see how, you know, because they'll find it, they'll put the money in and then decide how far down that list they can go.
Right.
You know, this was all based on, uh, the Olympics, right?
Yeah.
They wanted to get ahead of it.
That's right.
Cause.
So, from that perspective, it makes sense to have a, a good second access, but at the same time. If, if all we're using this for is emergency egress in, if there's a fire or something happens up there. Maybe we don't need it to be in the best condition ever, it needs to be passable. So those are some of the things that we need to figure out and find out what the Fire District will accept as well.
And so, if we're gonna fix this road, when do you wanna fix it all the way? I don't see. Well, why would we take it just to a standard of a dirt road?
Uh, only if we had the money from the state to overlay it. You know, I don't think we need it from a county perspective.
I have for one thought on that.
Well, Snow Basin needs it.
It, it, the minute, the minute you put asphalt on top of that, that kinda sets yourself up, or if it moves.
Right.
It ruptures and then you gotta come back and re- repair that, right?
Yeah, so every road we do is based on that.
Kind of, not every, every road we have is not built on a multiple active slides.
I understand that, but every road we do, if it moves or changes, they have to go back.
I think there's, I think there, they need to look at other, if they're looking at access, if we're gonna let Fire District drive this, which I have a problem with. Because they haven't driven the bus on Powder Mountain states others, they need to look at the access out of Strawberry. So Strawberry is a far better idea than, and, and that's eventually in their, in their plan for development, is to continue that loop over Strawberry.
Oh, up, uh, at Snow Basin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, so if they're gonna go a second access, they need to go to Strawberry, not here.
I actually agree with that.
Correct.
And by doing that, that gives them another access to the resort anyway.
Well, and they're gonna have to, I mean, that's their plans to build on, they're gonna improve off of that, they're not, they're, they'll never, that's Forest Service program.
That's right.
So there's gonna be no building off Old Snow Basin Road, there will be off of Strawberry.
Isn't that second access to the Old Snow Basin Road just gonna be used for emergency purposes only?
Well, that's how I view it.
Well, that's why I made the comment, are we really gonna go to gravel and not, uh. If it's gravel, we won't be plowing with snow, if it's gravel, we won't be, uh, you know. If something, uh, turns impassable in the middle of the winter, we wouldn't even know it.
Sure, well.
Makes it kinda tough. No, this is a, this is a, uh, uh, level of, uh. A level that they're requiring that, uh, they really haven't required on the other ones.
That's my point, yeah.
Boy, if you ask me, it's, uh, Powder Mountain, they're in much worse situation there than this.
Oh. A lot, ten, ten times.
Ten times, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at people coming down that road off of, to Snow Basin, the Trappers versus off Powder Mountain Road down. Um, there's, yeah, substantial amount of difference.
Not in the same kinda road, a road coming off of, uh. Ryan Williams used to say this all the time, do you remember Ryan?
Yeah.
He's the old plumber, he says, uh, Powder Mountain's the only, uh, ski resort in the state where the run's steeper than the road. Or the road's steeper than the run, I said that backwards.
Well, tell me how many people have been killed on that road since that road went in. Versus how many people were killed on the new Trapper, the new Snow Basin.
None. Boy, that's a, that's a dangerous dang road to run up there. It's still based on, well, the very first thing I did when I started skiing up in Powder. Was I took all my kids and told, taught them how to downshift.
Yeah.
Coming down, because everybody loses their brakes coming down there.
Yeah, I know you said brakes has been gone through.
Oh, yeah. It's a dangerous dang road.
So what I'd like to propose is, I'd like to have Rick get with David Reed. Let's find out exactly what those access requirements are, or what, what the Fire District is talking about. That gives us a better idea of what level of service we would need, whether that's seasonal, whether, whatever the factors are going to be. And then we'll have more information to come back with.
Yeah, you know, there's lots of roads in the state that almost be, could be considered a single access road. You know, where they're just driving through one place to another.
Absolutely.
You know, where they're just driving through one place to another. They have one I fifteen or something like that. They don't have second roads and third roads. You know, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what to say about that.
Well, I think a lot of this been driven by the Olympics. For whatever reason, and if it's being driven by the Olympics, then that should tie into some Olympic money. If it's been driven by development, then Snow Basin should participate, and if we ask them to participate. I think they'll come to the same conclusion. Why would we put a road in that we can't develop off it? Then, so.
Well, I think their argument would be, we did participate. That road's there.
Well. Well. Yeah, they could say that, but why did we ever close the Old Snow Basin Road?
We only closed it because of these issues that we're dealing with.
Yeah, yeah. There was slippage, there was, like I say, there was one area that was about an eighteen.
So that was a county decision.
It was.
So it was probably come down to Cox probably.
Yeah, it was just.
Within the last.
Yeah.
Ten years?
Yeah, probably seven or eight or seven years.
That's when we shut it off.
Well, you know, if we were gonna do this, we might, uh, wanna do exactly what we did at Powder Mountain. Make a certain area where the people pay the, use the road, pay for it.
Like a toll road?
Well, we didn't do a toll road up there, but we overlaid it and put other taxes.
Well, that's not really, for those people in that area, in my mind. Cause there's a lot of people from these other counties that go up and use it, frequent those trails. It's a hotspot. I mean, it's the side of the big, the, 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 the bicycle racer, the swimming, what do they call that? I mean, that gets world coverage.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, so it's, it's, not, don't just put it on the folks up there. I wanna put it on.
How are you gonna charge Exter?
Oh, well.
Yeah, good luck. We're gonna swing next to her too, is, is you're got mountain bikes. There's very few, there's only one. Road bike race that goes up that, but you could even turn it into a, a gravel road.
Yeah.
From the art north up. Where you don't, you live, you don't have all the expense of all the concrete.
That's, that's what I, if we're gonna do anything.
You're gonna plow, plow gravel road?
We just, we could be seasonal too.
I know you could.
Are we gonna? It's whatever we decide to do, right? Um, I lived on a gravel road that we plowed for. Forty years.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harvey hit the nail on the head. When we were up there measuring it, it was the end of October. I saw everything from deer hunters to people running, husbandless, walking their dogs. That, I mean, it was, it was everything, right? And there was an unbelievable amount of people using that road with it being.
And they're not all from Weber County.
I know.
From Art Nord up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And park at Art Nord.
Well, that's, if you're gonna charge the people, because there's no homes. Uh, after you get, well, from top of Art Nord where that hillside is, there's no other homes there. It's all forest.
You're right.
So. Also, I mean, this, you can't bounce them off it, it, it's mostly open for fire, right? Which is summer months.
Close it for the winter.
That's right. Close it for the winter. You don't have the maintenance on the winter. You just.
Yeah.
You know, you don't have to pile, you don't gotta install the road.
Yeah.
It's open during the summer months when you have fire issues for access out of there and. People can still use it for recreation.
Yeah. Well, I would think if the fire district is looking at it, requiring it, it's about fire.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I agree with you. With winter, I don't think.
There's a bigger.
Even if you, yeah.
One of the questions that was asked is if, if we did a fire station up there. Would that eliminate the need for a second access?
Well, now, hold on. Just a comment there. They, I know that the Weber fires looked at putting a fire station at the top of Powder Mountain.
They have, yeah. Yeah, and I think that that's why, because it does, that's why, right? And so it ends up saying, okay, what's cheaper, a fire station or a road?
And could we do the same with Snow Basin too?
I believe that is part of the plan.
Well, Snow Basin, our very first meeting with them, they actually had a fire station in there, if I recollect.
Yeah. I've seen for a couple of years.
Yeah, they're working on that as far as the fire station. And Powder Mountain too, once they do the hotel at the Powder Mountain. That triggers the fire station.
Doesn't.
Yep, and we're also with that fire station up there, we're trying to get two, um, bay, additional bays with that for the snow.
Well, okay, there we go. So what do you want from us?
Well, we'll bring back more information on Old Snow Basin Road. We really wanted just to get that in front of you and start. Talking about the concept of what it might entail and what you wanted it to entail.
Yep, alright. So just for your information. Rossins. I've got a, uh.
Who?
Rossins. They've got a transfer permit.
Recycle theirs.
And they now have a transfer permit that August City's issued. Now, for understand, it's actually permit that they've been in court on. Is that right, Sean?
That's my understanding is, is.
But they're done fighting in court and August City views that as a liability that they have and they've gone ahead and said, okay, you've got it. So, this does all kinds of things now.
Yeah.
You know, uh, first thing is, uh, it's for sale. Thirty million dollars.
Their operation.
Their operations. So twenty-two acres on both sides, eleven on each side of the road and.
Yeah.
Everything that goes with it. Of course, they're not gonna get that. But, uh, Republic, I happen to have somebody that I know, they've been in there and talked to them, frankly. And they're considering an offer.
Are they?
There they are.
Sounds like, like, you know, Republic or somebody like that's probably the logic for fire.
Yeah, but.
That'd be in, that'd be in conflict or co- uh, uh, competition, wouldn't it?
Mm-hmm. Would.
Yeah.
I asked him, why would they do that? He says, well. The way they figure this, there's two hundred and eighty, a thousand tons that go through our transfer station every year. And they figure that they control about eighty thousand of that. And if they can give that up to a hundred thousand, they could be profitable all on their own in a hundred thousand.
Run their own transfer.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, what that does is it cements their position.
Yeah.
But you know, Sean and Bill and I have talked a little bit about this and frankly. If August City pulled out or anybody pulled out, I just didn't give up on garbage. Man, we're not making any money at it and it's nothing but a pain in our butts the whole time and. We could just turn that thing over to somebody else and then, then end up making that our, uh, road shop. That'd be a great building to run roads out of.
Just get out of garbage.
Yeah, just get out of garbage. Clean that up, that site and say, okay, this is now, uh, Joe Hadley's, this is where he'll run out of. We'd love that.
What it comes down to, if the cities make that decision, then they've chosen private over public.
Yeah.
At that point, we have no business being in.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, if this, I, it's gonna be driven by the city.
Correct.
If August City gets some of their buddies together and say, hey, we're gonna go with you, then, as far as I'm, yeah, I agree. They've made their choice.
Yeah, that's where we view it. They've made their choice and that really makes it easy on us.
I, I see that's their, that's their decision, not ours.
Well, yeah, they view this as a threat. And I was just telling, uh, Sean, it's not a threat as far as I'm concerned. It's an answer to a great big problem.
No.
We'll just get out of the garbage business.
No, I, I have no heartburn with it. If they decide to do it, then God bless them.
That's what I view it.
So with that being.
We're Allah, Buddha, whoever.
Yeah.
With, with that being said, uh, John is starting to move the gate at the transfer station entrance right now.
Good.
This is to accommodate the right of way for the gentleman that, that bought Kathy Smith's property. So it helps us, it helps him. Uh, that way he does not have to come through our gate. We'll do some fencing along that west side. And, uh, Commissioner Jenkins is coming out tomorrow on a, we're gonna do a little site visit, block that, show exactly where the right of way will be. And I think we're done with that issue.
It's right on the edge of the property next to railroad track.
So it shouldn't bother us, Mike.
No, no.
That's the whole point. Wanna move the gate back so he can get on his own.
Exactly.
He's got, actually, the road was developed at one time and, uh, through in. In use, unused, it's just deteriorating. We've got pictures of it in two thousand and six, isn't it?
Yeah.
This shows a, a good dirt path that they've been using, they just let it go.
Right.
So, uh, we'll just say, say, okay, you're back on your path. There it is.
Just into that site.
Right.
Correct.
Now, the next question is, it's a fifteen-foot right of way. So that's really nice and tight.
Yeah.
And number two, we already know that he wants to store, uh, wrecked vehicles in there. Well, he's gotta get business permit for that.
Is that permit, that's not, that, that's not to zone for that.
It is actually.
You're right.
It is?
It's zoned for it. The issue is the access requires sixteen feet, Rick, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
And he's only got a fifteen-foot easement, so there, there will be some issues.
So he'd have to come best for a bearing.
That's correct. So. Yeah, now. With that being said, there's already been threats of attorneys and other things, so we'll, we'll let that play out however it plays out.
That's what I say.
Soon as he started that, let the five to seven year begin. That, that's crap. Yeah, if he's already bringing that up now, I, well, I changed my attitude a little bit.
Yeah.
Working with it.
One last thing on that. Commissioner Jenkins on the railroad tracks. I've confirmed with Gary Laird that the county installed those railroad tracks.
Yeah.
With that being said, do you, do you still have? Uh, Patriot Rail or, or Utah River Central interested in that?
Yeah.
They are interested.
Uh, they are. I got an email back from that bill and he says that they definitely are interested and they wanna give us a price.
Okay.
On all that rail?
Uh, so we've got two people interested, uh. To scrap it, Bloom wants to give us a bid. Well, they just said they'll come and take it.
They'll come take it and pay us whatever.
Yeah, but, uh, Patriot Rail, they want the rail, actually. And they said, uh, they'll come in, take it out and actually pay us a little money to take it.
Oh.
So that is the direction you want to go?
Well, I wanna get a price for each of them, see which is best. And Scott or, uh, Jason, I talked to him about it. He said he'll do it.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, so we won't have to.
In the meantime, we start to clean things up. We're on our way. We still parking there? Are still parking overnight there and storing some stuff?
They are. Yeah, they still got some, uh, tracker, some cars on the tracks.
Yeah, but we get a notice. Remember, we said I'd go over and talk to him, so I did. Told him we wanted him out on April first and they said, okay, they can get him out. Uh, you know, it's interesting. I said, you gotta get your rail cars out of there and he says, they're not actually our rail cars. I said, well, who are they? He says, well, these people buy those rail cars independent. And he said, we haul them around. So he says, when they buy those and they don't have enough freight to fill them. Then they have to find a place. And of course, we do that for them. But he says, when we pay you, he says, they pay us. So it just, they just, it's just cash flow for them to find a place to store. And he says, they have little spots like this all over the country to do it. So, yeah, anyway, that's how that goes. Also, uh, stopped into cash commodity, told them to get rid of their drain. That guy says, yeah, we got a land drain that goes down there. And I says, right, and your land drain's creating a swamp for us.
Oh, it is?
Uh-huh. Oh, yeah, that swamp out there. The old Hooper irrigation canal went through there and it's been dead-ended on both sides. Well, that land drain goes down there and it crosses right over the Wilson Canal into the Hooper Canal, and that's where it deadends. Well, that Ho- Hooper Canal doesn't go anywhere anymore. So it ends up just creating a great puddle there.
So what are they gonna do?
Well, I told him he had the first April to get it out. He says, can I put in the Wilson Canal? I said, I don't know nothing. I said, I cannot tell you. I just want it out of our canal, or out of the Hooper Canal.
That's right.
Because I says, we're dead-ending and we're gonna fill that with gravel and make it nice. He said, okay, I'll take care of it. So we'll see what happens. But I told him.
Okay, that's all we.
Well, then I also contacted the, uh, that Jay Sig Miller for Hooper. And told them we wanted them to deed his that property. I says, you got that little piece property and it doesn't go anywhere. You use it, just sits there. And, uh, I said, we wanna start using it. He said, oh, said, okay, says, we'll probably consider that. So he was gonna, at their next meeting. Well, they're gonna talk about it. But yeah, that's what I kinda thought they'd do, ought to do.
Yeah, that piece is interesting because technically it says it's owned by the USA, but we're not sure how that really works.
Yeah. So anyway, we just want it and. We had two thirty. Alright guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Send the rest in. John Watson and Steve Peterson, whoa, high rollers.
You know what this is about? I, I would guess. What was the purchase exchange on, you're talking about twelve thirty? Purchase exchange.
Gentlemen.
Hey, boy, look who's here.
So nice to see y'all.
Wow.
You, Steve Peterson, you know, Jared Hadley.
How are you guys doing?
Jared is Steve's son-in-law and Jordan Watson is my son.
That's the, that's the top branch of the family tree.
More branches of the family tree. See how you're doing, bud. Good seeing you.
Yeah. Doing good, how about you?
Your darling.
Yeah, I just turned back to Phoenix, been down there for a couple days. Warmed up.
How you doing, bud?
Well, I don't know, you're pretty good.
No. They are.
You doing good?
Yeah, oh yeah, no complaint.
Scott, my daughter attended a swim party at your place and she had good things to say about the pool and how cool it is.
Turned out pretty cool.
Almost as good as she is.
Yeah.
That is pretty cool too. Yeah, Dave's first stage, wanna get in. We'll tell you right where to go.
In fact, just straight across the hall.
You know, I couldn't imagine working with two graders.
Oh, oh, it's been great.
I'm serious.
Been four and a half wonderful years.
I can't imagine. And I think about you too, as legislation is getting to its finish, I think. These years without having to be there, gotta been nice.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, that's a.
I mean, that's a, I know that's a kind of a fun element and things, but that is.
Yeah, that'll last three years.
Hurry though, I tell you that.
Yeah, after your first year or two goes by, then it's like, oh, let's get this through. It's hard. Well, hard, hard.
And it seems like every year.
Yeah.
It seems like it's getting hard.
Yeah. Alright, go ahead, you guys. The time's yours. Hey, first of all, thank you for allowing us to visit.
Oh, yeah.
Always good to see you.
Commissioners? Commissioners, on the agenda, this is a closed session.
Oh. Boy, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. We go to closed session to discuss real estate.
What was that motion?
Uh, yeah, I made the motion.
I'll search for it.
Home favorite side.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Alright, we're in a closed session.
Sir, I'm ready to go.
Okay, let's go ahead and start. Uh, just me and Commissioner Harvey are here right now, but Gage will be right back in the room. He had to go downstairs for a minute.
Okay, well, he'll get to hear a part of this again, uh, in our Board of Health meeting.
Yeah, that's true. Gage will hear it again anyway, so it doesn't matter. Alright, bud, go ahead.
It's been a couple of me, uh, weeks since we last, uh, talked, but the, the trend has continued downward. Um, so we're, we're still seeing good, good changes happening. We're up to a total of seventy-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight cases in our area. That's only an increase of two hundred and twenty-nine over. Last week, um. Which is half of, about half of what we saw la- uh, the week before. So it's, again, we're on.
About a half and then half again.
Yep.
Well, that's a good, that's good.
I made you see that chart.
It's dropped down to thirty-two new cases a day. So on the fourteenth, we were at a hundred and twenty-eight new cases a day. Twenty-first, we were at sixty-three and now we're at thirty-two. So again, half.
Holy cow, it's worth a third, or twenty percent.
Dropping fast, uh, which is good. We're down to about the number of active cases that we saw. Last, uh, end of July, first part of August. Seventeen hundred active cases right now in our area. Um, and again, it's a decrease of fourteen hundred and nine from, from a week prior, so.
And, and so.
We're trend. And then over the last two weeks, death, uh, we've had eleven additional deaths. Uh, so we're up to a total of four hundred and fourteen. And our hospitalizations, that we've seen, continue to see a decline. Sixty-seven percent of our ICU beds at the two hospitals are being occupied right now and that. It's the lowest we've, we've seen since, um. Since like August of twenty twenty, so. Good indicator there. We have thirty-nine total hospitalizations, um. Uh, associated with COVID. Only four of those are in ICU units right now. Um, two hundred and forty-one of our, uh, our. Other hospital beds occupied, two hundred and forty-one out of four hundred and fifty-five. Good, good trends in our hospitals right now. Um, and if we, hopefully we stay on track and, and start to give them the break that they so desperately need. We look at our school situation, uh, very similar things to report in our schools. We only have fifty-seven active cases in our schools right now. Um, with, and with, we have, that's the lowest we've been since the start of the school year. Uh, forty, forty-six of those are in students, seven in teachers and four in other staff. Um, so. Fifty-three of our schools are reporting at least one case. Uh, so I, again, in our schools, we haven't seen that number the whole school year. So. Things are on the right track, um, and, and headed the direction we need them to. Because of that, there's, there's a few things that have happened over the last two weeks that I don't wanna make you aware of. Uh, first of all, let's talk about Governor Cox, um, and his directive to. The State Health Department and other state agencies to move towards. Uh, what he's calling the COVID steady state. Um, and really, this is part of the transition of moving from. A pandemic response to an endemic response or a response that just kind of accepts that we have this. Uh, virus in our community and we go about our day-to-day lives with, it's here and present. Um, and try to take steps to reduce that risk at, at an individual level as best we can. Um, given the state, the guidance to, uh, to transition to that steady state by March thirty-first. Of this year, the State Health Department has asked the local health departments to follow along with that guide. Um, so some changes you'll start to see from us after the thirty-first of the year. Um, I change, most people will see immediately. Is, uh, we're, we're going to move away from reporting daily case numbers. Um, we'll report weekly case numbers, but we're gonna add some, uh, some additional reporting. Because the, the, the case numbers are being, uh, have become a little bit less reliable with changes in testing. And more, uh, use of at-home testing. Um, so instead of reporting case numbers, we're gonna transition and report hospitalizations. Water data and, um, s- some other indicators in our community like, uh, like percent positive tests. and situations in our schools. We'll still focus on schools throughout the school year to help them control outbreaks that way. But that, we're currently starting to plan and move towards that transition. Um, I would like to, at our health department, with what we're reporting, not only report the the syndromic and the hospitalized, hospitalization data for COVID, but we're going to include trying to include in those reports influenza and other respiratory illnesses, just so that we provide that information to our community. Wastewater data is a very helpful and, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we're trying to incorporate that into how we'll report that or, or make it available on our website for people to see. It's, it's another good monitoring tool separate from, you know, case numbers or, or case counts, so to speak. So we'll be moving along that transition. Um, and it also ends, um, you know, any any type of official guidance that we would not, um, that we would recommend for mask use or, um, personal distancing, or I shouldn't say end it. Just transitions how we communicate it more as a tool for people to use to protect themselves than, um, it's something that businesses or schools should use, uh, to protect the community or school. So there's, just kind of be aware of that and watch for that.
So Brian, when do you, when do you anticipate this taking place?
Uh, March thirty-first is the date the governor has set for the State Health Department and they've asked us to follow that with the local health department.
So Gage?
Some, some.
From Brian after that date?
I don't see, no. It's not unless something else kicks in, in my opinion.
So Brian, I agree with Gage. After that date, I think you can plan on not presenting to us anymore.
Yeah.
Right.
Not that, hey, hold on, not that we don't love hearing from you. That's been a delight.
I, I uh, telefib here. I'm excited about some of my meetings not happening anymore and freeing up some time so I can work on some other things, so.
Yeah, well, we understand that, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. You've done a great job, Brian. I don't want you to think we don't appreciate you because we do.
It's great. It's been a good difference all the way along.
I think I feel comfortable that if I need to approach the three of you with an issue, I, I know how to do that. Visiting with you in these meetings and, and I know how to get myself on the work work meeting schedule. So I, you know, I, I appreciate the trust. I can check in with you when I feel like it's warm.
Great, that's good. All right. Any other questions, Gage?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I can. All right. Brian, I think, you know, I wanna, uh, tell you that I appreciate your leadership through this too. You know, I realized that you came on right in the heart of a very difficult transition. And then this Omicron was incredibly difficult and you've done a wonderful job and we appreciate you being forthright and how you've, uh, you've led that team over there. Thank you so much.
Hey, thanks, Commissioner, for those kind words. Appreciate that.
I think we, I think I can say though, we all collectively feel that way. I just happen to be the
Absolutely.
guy singing the lead on the song right now.
He, he just, he's the cheerleader right now.
Yeah. They're gonna do some do-wops here in a minute if you wanna stay on.
All right, Brian, have you got anything else to bring up or is that about it?
Just real quick, let me mention that the CDC has also changed, um, their guidance. On Friday, they announced a new system, uh, to communicate trans, transmission risk at a county level across the country. Um, they've, they've identified Weber County currently as a medium risk. And as our cases continue to decline, um, then um, their recommendations are changing for mask use as well. And, and they're, the CDC is really saying that, um, you know, the people that should be using masks right now are those that, uh, are men, are, um, compromised. We're at a higher risk of, uh, of, of contracting COVID and exposure to public. But for uh, how, average healthy adults, um, you know, we, they can go, go a lot about life as before COVID. Um, and we'll start to see some changes in some of the guidance with travel as well associated with mask use. So it's
Right.
Taking some transition. That's, uh, that's what I've got for you today.
Hey, Brian, before you leave, so we didn't have the Zoom set up for the Board of Health meeting before?
Uh, there was a, an email link that went out to the Board of Health members this morning, um, just as a reminder that that's a later.
Will you, will you send me that link? I don't, I don't have it in my email, so. I just you can send me that, send me that link and then I'm assuming that uh, you're prepared to do it. I mean, last, last month, it was fifteen, twenty minutes before we could sign on.
Yeah, um, so la, last month, it was Michaela and I trying to do the, the whole meeting ourselves and we did, uh, have a few hitups. I've got people assigned to monitor the Zoom meeting this time, so.
Good. Well, if you'll send me the link, so I've got it, I'm happy to sign on.
It's on its way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Welcome.
Thanks, Brian.
I've only got about ten minutes I can spend with Sheriff Harbaugh and then I gotta go.
Where are you going? Come on.
I've got it. Yeah.
Got what?
A woman with a Heiko, name of a group called Heiko.
There's a sheriff.
What's happening? I don't mean to be rude. I'm letting you know I've gotta leave in about ten minutes.
He's got to do Harvey.
Okay.
I'll, I can do the fireworks first. Is this public or private or closed? Public?
Yes.
All right, Sheriff, go ahead.
Oh, boy, we're racking them off right away.
Did you file? I did this morning. Did anybody else? I've been, I honestly, I'm just trying to catch a breath today. It's been outrageous. Good stuff.
Good stuff, right?
Yeah.
Really good.
Super good. I was impressed. I was looking for the pickleball court. I know there's one in there.
It's coming. Thanks, Christine. Um, yeah, thank you guys for your support. The whole design, as you guys know, before you took these positions, it's about accountability. People wanna know where their money's going.
You bet.
So that's who we targeted was all the leaders in the county that would have possibly have any chance of working with emergency management, SWAT, uh, search and rescue, training, and we had somewhere between two and three hundred people show up.
Really?
Steady flow. Yep.
That's great.
And it was all about, yeah, thank you. It's all about networking. It had nothing to do with showing off. It was all about, this is what we do.
Haven't you got cool stuff to show off?
Yes, we do.
No, that's ability to show off. Heck.
Yeah. It was good.
They did.
Turned out better than we'd anticipated.
Yeah. So I, I, I was talking to Eli and I said, Eli, what, what kind of cool things are you gonna talk about with the, uh, Mobile Command Center? And I says, people are gonna ask you about finance. And he goes, oh, I got something. Did you know that the DOT, Department of Transition, Trans? Thank you. Will not allow a vehicle like our Mobile Command to have tires, no matter the tread life, longer than five years. So we don't roll that thing very much. But guess how much those tires cost a piece?
I'll bet those tires are about eight hun.
You know, though, you're a big old man.
Almost double.
Sixteen hundred a piece?
They're between twelve and fourteen hundred.
For mobile, mobile command?
For that big, they're semi tire and they hold so much weight.
You gotta use those for crossfit.
Ten to fifteen thousand dollars every time we do tire replacement.
Oh, my.
We've done four since we've owned it.
Oh. So you need to, uh, you need to get a hold of a, uh, a trucking outfit that uses those kinds of tires. I suspect they'll give you a high, high amount.
Yeah. And, and I, that's what Eli said, but look into that.
Yeah, cuz they'll, they don't care.
Yeah, they don't care. But, uh, they're great tires, but we can't have them longer than five years.
Really?
You know.
I don't really want a tread light, you know.
There's a guy, I run lots of these kinds of trucks.
Recaps.
I've never heard that.
That's what Eli said.
Why did he, I don't know.
Why do they get our nose into that?
Well, I know. I, like I say, hey, I've never heard that. I've got a bunch of these.
I, I don't doubt it, but that's what Eli told me. So I'm thinking, my gosh.
Well, Eli told me that also that because we can bring them from outside inside, that we're gonna save thirty to forty thousand a year in maintenance for tires.
We will.
Batteries.
Well, tires is, you know, they start to rot and crack. And so that's what we'll save. So instead of replacing them every two to three, maybe we're gonna get five to six out of them now.
That makes sense.
Other than you just said you can't go past five.
Right. Well, I'm just saying for that type of machine, maybe, I'm talking like the trailers and all the other stuff.
They don't care.
Yeah. We're those tires are hundred, hundred fifty bucks a piece.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, are we on, uh?
Yeah, public.
Public. Okay. Uh, the drone system is unbelievable. And I know you gotta leave, so I'm gonna do the drone thing first.
Right on. I love drones. You know that.
So we've, there's some stuff that we have signed an NDA on, but I will tell you this. That the company that makes ninety percent of all drones are in contact with us. And they are sending us stuff to train and, and not train, to do research and development. And they're, they're ready to go to market and give us. We're doing training videos. We're doing all sorts of stuff for them and they love what we do and.
I got a place for bird nest. I keep telling you.
I'm getting there. So, so DJI is trying to come up with a system that we can fly a drone from a command and use a nesting type set that can launch it from somewhere else, cuz most drones you have to fly from line of sight now. So we're trying to get some exemptions. Uh, Motorola has a system, it's called CAPE. And basically you have a tower that communicates to an officer or a device so you can fly the drone off these coordinating points. So you have better, so you can find longer distances. So we're working really good with them. Uh, in fact, Kyle has been in talks with the main company, the executives in China. Uh, almost, uh, two, three times the rate on drones. Kyle, this is just awesome. So we're using us, uh, Portland continually gets, uh, three to five contacts a month from literally places all around the world about how we're using drones in search and rescue. We've been featured at least two art, uh, magazines on search and rescue. It's awesome. We're doing good stuff.
You guys do, uh, do you go the rescue on the Weaver River?
Uh, do we or have we?
I know you have.
Yes. Okay.
Say, that's all in your territory.
So we wanna show you some of the capability.
Look at that.
This is
LiDAR.
This is, uh, Thermo. And it's a fire. We went out and helped the fire department. So the key thing is, you can see the fireman and you can actually see him spraying their water. But what this does is it helps them find their hotspots from up above.
That's a cool thing.
That's way cool.
Yeah, you can tell where it's hotter.
Walking along there.
Yeah.
That's pretty neat.
Way cool.
Yeah.
So this is some kind of a, uh.
Now, can you, can you imagine this? If the fire department gets a call and the drone gets there first with this technology, they're gonna know where to start, where to focus on. They're gonna have so much more info. So we, we're trying to figure out how we can work with fire department on this.
Yeah, you want, you wonder where a fire goes first. Look there, it's right in the attic. Yeah, that's going right through the attic of that house. Look at that.
Yeah, we can change all kinds of colors to, to, to demonstrate, uh, where the heat is.
That's cool as heck.
That's good. I keep telling you guys. I keep telling you guys about drones. Tell us again.
Tell us again.
Man, they're cool.
Well, nobody argues that. They are cool.
They save. They can save literally.
We need to buy ten or fifteen more.
I agree.
Now, you guys remember when we had that shooting last year, we found that the guy.
The one up in Eden?
Yeah.
Or Hunsfield?
Yeah.
The guy that came out and he had that weapon?
Hadley, one that shot his wife.
Something's wrong with this, uh, picture here.
Drag the zero back. There you go. Yeah, we got you now.
No, we, we, we had, so, so this is tear apart auto by our office.
Uh-huh.
And we deployed the drone. We got, we got three different videos. So there's the, there's the suspect. Now this is five AM, pitch black.
Hey, you can see him running along there.
Right? Yep. Now he hides there for a while. Now, the thing is, is you guys know that when we go to these calls, how many times we can't find the person.
Oh, yeah.
Where is this?
Tear apart auto, right next to our office.
Okay.
We're also getting ready to launch a program with our jail staff to use drones with the letter of agencies I talked about last time we met.
Yeah, there he's moving again.
Yep.
That's a suspect, huh?
Yeah, he has no idea that the drone's up there. Now think, now think, now think, if you get a call.
He went through the fence so quick. There he is.
Yeah. Now, when you get a call, can you imagine the safety that we're getting out of this right here? Is there one guy or is there ten guys? Do we need to send one officer or do we need to send ten?
Yeah, is there any way we can surround it?
Yeah, right where the car go.
Yeah, now they stopped again.
Yeah, so this, this goes on. So here's another view. Again, this is, this is five AM, it's pitch dark outside. This is the technology we have in our camera. Okay, I'm gonna move to the final slide. He's in, he's, he's under, I think, one of these cars right here, but I'm gonna go to the last video.
That's pretty cool. I need to tell you again about drones.
Okay, see the officers? We got the canine.
Yeah.
We have them here. Now they're, right now they're communicating with the drone operator. And they're telling them where he's at. So he's crouching down. I think he's right here.
Oh.
Right?
What'd you, underneath the car?
Yeah, he, he hid under one of those cars. Now, now we know where he's at.
There he is.
Now he won't come out, so he's helped out. And he's cuffed. And you know what else this provides? It's a different view. It's not body cam view, so it's a lot more accurate. And it also gives us a chance to hold our guys a lot more accountable.
Yeah. I was gonna say.
Wow, I like that part too.
Oh, yeah.
I'm surprised you didn't turn that dog loose a little sooner. Of course, you knew about where he was, so you really didn't have to, but.
So hard, just so you know, I asked the drone guys to come in and talk to us.
They're coming next month.
One of our work present, one of our work sessions. Come in and tell us all this. He told me they saved seven people since he've had it. That's what he told me the other day. The drones have been able to save.
Seven sheriffs?
Or lives? No, lives, seven lives.
Really?
Yeah.
So just
Find them lost, snow, whatever.
So what we're working on right now, commissioners, is we're working on some really cool stuff. We wanna do a nest out on Pine View. Guess what we're gonna rig? We're trying to figure out to rig one of those drones with to drop life preservers.
Oh, awesome.
We had four drownings last year. Now, if we get the call, that drone can be there less than a minute from the call. And remember the live nine-one-one we talked about that we're going at the same time? We hear drowning, it cues, we can fly the drone right up, put it right over camera. If there's somebody, you know, struggling or whatever, drone goes over there, drops the vest.
So you'd have, you gotta have a nest at cemetery point.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I prefer those nests, cuz you could be operating them from 12th Street. And then when the drone gets done, guess what he does? Goes back.
Yep.
In the nest. Gotta retool, you gotta get a new vest. Lasertone?
Yeah, lasertone, good stuff.
Uh, what do we have last? Three.
Four.
Four. We have four drownings.
All right, see you, Commissioner.
Okay, I'll see you. At the, at the, uh, that's right. Thank you.
At the what?
Commissioner, at the, uh, the expanded apartment here.
Oh, yeah.
Across the street, yeah.
All right, tomorrow.
Well, I am.
About that.
Eight AM. That's great, Ryan. That's really cool stuff.
Okay, uh, moving right along, uh, commissioners, uh, you guys know that that law passed that we can hire nineteen-year-olds in corrections.
I saw that.
So we did our first, uh, testing. We had seventeen people show up for our, our open positions of fifty-ish total. Nine of them weren't under age twenty-one.
Okay.
It's just great.
Uh, just for corrections?
Yes, corrections only.
Corrects, yeah, not enforcement.
Yeah, there's, there's still, they're not a full correction as, as far as they can't carry, so they can't be assigned to the transportation unit in court because they gotta carry. They can't carry till they're twenty-one. Uh, we currently have
So it's like an internship, look.
Uh, yeah, but they start their benefits, they're in their career, they get the retirement, but yeah, but it's, it's if I would put it to number, it's, they can do about ninety-five percent of what the others can do.
Really?
Yeah.
That's good.
It's pretty much not with a gun.
Yeah.
So uh, we have four, uh, pending hire, two support and two corrections and trainee. We have thirteen deputies currently in background process, two enforcement, eleven of them are in corrections. Uh, we have a contract with Weaver State for thirty academy positions. Uh, right now we've got two registered out of the thirty with fifteen potentials. So that's a quick and dirty eve, uh, report for our, from our support staff who helps us greatly with recruitment and training.
It was telling me that Weaver State's, uh, started a class out of the norm just for
Just for us.
Yeah.
And we're pushing it hard, um.
Get extra guys in there.
As you guys know, that, uh, the, the law enforcement of the, uh, part-time academy at Weaver State, the last ten years, As you guys know, that, uh, the, the law enforcement of the pa- uh, part-time academy at Weber State, the last ten years, ten years ago, we had about forty to forty-five that graduated. The last three years, we've had zero.
Really?
Cuz they don't hit the twelve, the fifteen marks, what they do is cancel class. So we're probably bringing people in from, from
So I asked him about your post-training. So this doesn't take place at that, does it?
What? The Weber State? Yeah, it's a, it's, it's a satellite office.
So it does, in fact, take place of your, uh, post.
Well, they're all posts, but they're just different locations.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah, instead of sending them down Sunday, we can send them here.
Yeah, well, that's nice, I think.
I think that's really nice.
Yeah.
That's a pain to have to travel down there to go through that.
It's gonna make recruiting a little easier, too.
Um, this one is especially for you, Gage. Um, we are, um, this is a contract that we have with, uh, it's, it actually, it's not a, it's a grant. Uh, you, you should know a little bit about it. This, I signed it. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We just need a signature from you. Here's the paperwork. If you don't wanna sign it now, that's okay. Uh, if you wanna get someone to look at it, that's just fine.
Granted, for what?
It's a grant for, I, I believe it's training. It's an agreement, how we handle it. I know when you read it, you'll recognize it. Attorney's gone over it, I've signed it, saying I review it.
I think, uh, one of the attorneys talked to you about this. This is the Department of Justice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Sign it away. I don't see a word problem with this.
Yeah, so if you, if you wanna hold, that's fine. If you wanna sign it, give it to me, I can take it.
Let's get it done now.
Heck. Also, uh, Chief Perry wanted me to share this with you. We are working on a program, as you know, that's a, a cell phone in that picture, and it's called Off-Duty Management. As you guys know, when you have a heck of a lot of, uh, employees, it's, it's hard to balance uh, extra shifts. And so the Off-Duty Management offers an application where we can use to manage special event overtime shifts such as Ragnar, fair events, movie sets, et cetera. Currently, these events are managed by hand and sign-ups are posted in the office. This application would allow us to post, sign up for, and track shifts throughout the whole application that's, that's available. I mean, so, so instead of coming in and signing up, they get, you know, they can do it all through their phone. Super slick, saves us a lot of time and money. The cost, there's no direct cost to the sheriff's office for the service. This company provide, this company provides, the company charges a small admin fee approximately six dollars an hour that is billed to the requesting person business. So, so the business, if, if some, if Ragnar calls us, we have our fee, but then there's a six-dollar fee that's added on that they pay, not us.
And what do they do exactly?
They manage the events. So Ragnar comes in, they need twenty deputies.
Right.
So we say, yep, go through them, they go, we get our rate, but then they get their fee.
So you don't have to deal with the paperwork. Oh, hell, that just saves money.
Saves money, time, and it's all digital, cuz you know the old signup form? You gotta go check it, and then you gotta put it in the computer, do all, it's all done. Uh, uh, let's see.
What's wrong with that?
Chief Perry has received preliminary approval from legal, purchasing, and the comptroller's office. They are making a few minor adjustments to the contract and anticipate putting this on a work session shortly. I'm just giving you a heads up, so there's no surprise. Uh, fee schedule update at the same time, this is proposed, a change to update the deputy fee to accurately affect current costs, which will also be presented. So we, we also put in there that I think we're charging fifty bucks for our service, which is cheap. We need to adjust that to the proper.
Yeah.
And that's all included too. That's what I have for you in a nutshell.
Oh, that's great.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I like it. Everything, everything you just said is positive.
Yep, uh, oh, dang it, I wish you hadn't said that. Um, can we mute this?
No.
This is, uh, I got a confidential matter.
Is it for personnel?
It has to do, something happened at the jail.
We need a closed session?
How do we do that?
I mean, it's gonna come out public sooner or later, but
Uh, you know, this, this finishes what we've got to do. I think I just go ahead and
Yeah, I just, I think we just